Yes, round and round.
Oh, no.
Nine, eight, seven, six.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We're glad you're joining us today, those joining us online, Facebook and YouTube, those joining us on our television partner, KPTS. And all of you smiley faces joining us here in person, we're glad that you're here today. Got a wonderful meeting in order, got a couple great proclamations and some good business with a couple updates from the community, too. So let's get right to it. What do you say? Let's get to work. Let's call the meeting to order October 23rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Brent Workington. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your goodness and your mercies that are new every morning. He goes without saying, these are interesting days in our nation. It seems everyone's slinging mud and everyone's mad and angry and complaining. And so I don't expect otherwise, but I pray that Sedgwick County might be a better example of kindness, of listening, even in the midst of different opinions, that we would be respectful and civil. And so we do pray for wisdom for these wonderful leaders of our county. We ask your blessing on them. Thank you for hearing this prayer. And we are grateful for our county and our state and our nation. And please, please bless it. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you. Appreciate you being here for your encouragement. One note before we move on, Commissioner Meitzner is joining us from Zoom. I hadn't seen him up there when we got started to call the meeting to order. He's here now. And he'll be joining us today via Zoom. So Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. So first off, we are going to talk about the election. We're two weeks out from the 2024 general. Advanced in-person voting is underway at the Election Office, Reformation Church, and the Sedgwick County Extension Office. Satellite locations open on October 29th, which is also the last day you can request an advance by mail ballot. Advanced in-person voting ends at noon on November 4th. An election day is Tuesday, November 6th. Polls are open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Remember that if you were in line to vote before 7:00 PM, stay in line as you will still be able to cast your vote. For satellite locations and hours, you can check your polling location on our website at sedgwickcounty.org/elections. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources will be hosting a household hazardous waste remote collection this Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. Come drop off your used paint, batteries, motor oil, household cleaners, and more at the Sedgwick County Zoo parking lot A. Daylight savings time ends November 3rd, and we fall back one hour. This is the perfect time to not only change your clocks, but replace the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. It's also a good time to look at how old your detectors are, as you should change your smoke alarms every 10 years and carbon monoxide detectors every seven. Visit sedgwickcounty.org/fire for more information on carbon monoxide and smoke alarm education programs. And now, we have some special guests in the audience. I'm going to have Chief Williams come up, and he's going to talk about the Kansas Task Force One and those firefighters that assisted with Hurricane Helane. Sir?
Wonderful. Chief, welcome. Is it possible to make a motion to deny daylight savings time? Could we do that?
I so move.
Good morning, Chief. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. I want to talk to you a little bit about Kansas Task Force One. Nicole has some pictures up here from our captain and lieutenant that deployed with Kansas Task Force One. One thing to understand about the task force, we set as a piece of Kansas Task, as regional Task Force Five, which involves Wichita, Hutchinson, Newton, Winfield, many, Great Bend, many of the departments in the south central region. And as a part of that, we get free training that provides a swift water, heavy rescue, all collapse, all kinds of training levels that we get free and we get some free equipment out of that involvement with that task force. And with that, we have an obligation then to respond to the region when an event happens. However, also being a part of that, we set as a piece of what they call Kansas Task Force One, which is all of the regions in the state come together to form that. And instead of robbing, you know, a lot of resources from this region or from the Kansas City area or from Manhattan, Topeka, they, when they deploy Kansas Task Force One, they generally try to pull from a whole bunch of different areas so that they don't deplete areas of resources. So when this deployment for the hurricanes happened, Hurricane Helane and then also Milton, they requested some assistance. So we had a captain and lieutenant here today to talk to you about their experience. And they deployed with Kansas Task Force One, which had two members of Wichita and some from Manhattan. And they can talk about that better than me. But it was quite an experience. I think they found some things that they wouldn't have ever seen had they not deployed on this and helped some folks that were in dire need. I've sent a lot of pictures back. One of the things, it's not up here, but I found interesting is when they were going up the trail, one morning they ran across a couple black bears beside the road that provided them a little different size-up scenario than what they're used to out here. So anyway, I'll invite Captain Weeby and Lieutenant Brenneman. They can come up and talk to you about their experience a little bit.
Okay, very good. Captain, Lieutenant, welcome. We're glad you're back.
Thank you. Good morning. So as Chief said and introduced us, we went to Florida for a week, and then we went to North Carolina about, well, a week left, right after that. So we were gone for two weeks.
We were originally sent just to Florida with intentions of helping with the hurricane, doing swift water search and rescue. So when it came to also going to North Carolina, something we discovered, maybe we should pack for all seasons instead of just Florida.
Yeah. We ran across all sorts of devastation. As you see in these pictures, Florida had their, you know, what you would kind of expect flooding, flooded homes, cars, houses shifted off their foundations a little bit. But a lot of it, all these photos you see up here were from North Carolina. They definitely experienced, I think, more devastation than Florida, kind of in a different manner. They lost a lot of infrastructure, roads, utilities. As you can see, I mean, in that lower corner picture that, I don't know how big that tank was, but I know it was probably about 30 feet tall, 40 feet tall. And it did not belong there. I don't know where it came from. A lot of things we came across were just like that. Houses weren't where they were supposed to be. A lot of the, what we were given as an assignment was go in a specific area and do kind of a search and then damage assessment. And just go door to door and see if anybody needed anything, if they're home, any supplies they could think of. We could help relay that back to our EOC, and then they could coordinate the efforts of getting them what they needed. Or if they wanted to shelter in place, that was their prerogative. We weren't trying to force people out of their homes, but we're trying to give them some sort of a educated answer on, you know, do we think you should stay or not, if they were having any questions. But majority of the people are like, no, I've lived here for 30 years. I don't, I'm not giving up my place, which is fine. They were super, super emotional, super excited to see us. Several people we came across, we were the first faces they'd seen in over a week. And then they found out, you know, that we were all the way from Kansas. And so that was added even more to it. And so for me, and I think for Captain Weeby, that was probably some of the biggest things that we saw and took away from it, is we're from Kansas. And we were able to impact their lives just by saying hello. And then reaching, there was one instance where we were, one of the squads was able to reach out to this gentleman's mom that was from out of state, and she, they haven't spoken probably a week or two. And so she had no idea how he was doing. He couldn't communicate. And we were able to use our satellite phone and be able to reach out to her and just give her a, he's doing okay. So that was big, I felt like.
Yeah. Well, thank you. It's pretty remarkable. I had asked Chief to kind of, for some updates while you guys were gone, and he would send over a couple pictures and things of sort. And it was, you're right, it's devastating. There's not a lot of words. I'm certain seeing it firsthand is an experience that you'll never forget. So Chief, would you tell us, how did, we're part of this task force. Does this request come from the governor's office for, to send people? Does it come from the governor of Florida? How does this work?
When we get, you know, when we deal regionally, you know, we're dealing with a regional request, whether it be from Hutch or Newton, or it could be from a small town. But that's part of a regional team. As part of state task force, Kansas Task Force One, they have what they call EMAC, which is an emergency management proclamation between states. So Florida and in this case Tennessee also put out requests for other states to assist them. And Kansas agreed to do that. So that request came from state, one state to another state. And that's the proclamation that we have. I mean, we could do that with brush fires with Oklahoma or in this state. And with these guys, they were in Florida based on Florida's EMAC request. And then once Florida released their request and said, you can go home, before they got out of the state, Tennessee, or Tennessee, I'm sorry, North Carolina had put out a request for assistance. And Kansas took that up and said, hey, we got a team already down there. We'll just divert them. So they went from one state request to another state request. And then another team from Kansas went down later, back to Florida for the Milton hurricane. So there was kind of a revolving door of state requests that our Kansas Task Force responded to.
Wow. That's incredible. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Captain, Lieutenant, thank you. Thank you for being willing to go and for what you guys did for all those vulnerable people down there. We appreciate you deeply, so.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Nicole, one thing on the election piece.
Yes.
The election, the general election, the election day is actually Tuesday, November the 5th. So we had in our notes in air, it was, it said November 6th, it's Tuesday, November 5th.
Yes.
I'd also add that because we've added 25 new polling sites this year, there's over 100 polling sites for election day, that on election day, you have to go to your polling site. And 30% of registered voters in Sedgwick County have a new polling site. So we recommend, because we've added so many, please go to sedgwickcounty.orgbackslashelections and verify where your polling site is. Now, if you stand in line, you get to the front, and you realize you're at the wrong polling place, our election staff's still going to take care of you. You'll be able to vote a provisional ballot. But ideally, once you go to the correct polling place the first time. So please, make sure you verify your polling place before you go on election day. Or vote early. There's 17 sites that'll be available for early voting. And that's what our election commissioner, because of the high turnout, they're recommending that. So Commissioner Howe?
And just to clarify one other thing, if you do, if you do vote early, you get to vote on the correct ballot. On election day, if you go to the wrong poll site, they will try to find a ballot that is close to what you're supposed to vote on. But some of those races may not be correct. And so those races that are not correct, if you want to vote for a state representative or something, it's a smaller district, those races won't count if you're in the wrong district, if they give you the wrong ballot. So it's just one of those things where we really do encourage people on election day to go to the right poll site. We have what's called the vote anywhere law that we passed years ago, I think back in 2019, David would confirm that with me. But it's never has been implemented. So on election day, you have to go to your poll site that you're assigned to devote a normal process and devote on the correct ballot. Otherwise, it will not be, it will not necessarily have the right races on that ballot. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Nicole?
Thank you for clarifying, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay. We have several people sign up for public agenda. Most are on the zoning case. So I'm assuming that everyone would wish to speak when that zoning case line item comes up in the agenda. We'll hold that for that point in time and get some further directions then. There is one other person that signed up outside of zoning. And I'm going to do my best on the, on the last name, but I think it's Mandy. I don't, I'm not sure what the, I can't read the last name. Oh, you're with the zoo. Okay, so you're just going to hang out with the zoo. There you are, Mandy, yes. So you'll just hang out and talk with the zoo. You're with the right guy. Okay, so we're going to hold off on public comment for the designated areas on the agenda, and we'll move this thing forward. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of October 9th, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone was present with the exception of Commissioner Dennis on the meeting minutes. So I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 9th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Abstain, but I did read the minutes.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Proclamations, item B, proclamation declaring disability employment awareness month.
Okay, wonderful proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Dennis to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. This is a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, recognition of the contributions of persons with disabilities is an effective way to overcome negative stereotypes and eliminate physical and attitudinal barriers to full participation in all aspects of community life, including education, recreation, and employment. And whereas people with disabilities are an important, vital part of our community as valued workers, civic leaders, business owners, veterans, family members, and friends, they are involved, innovative, and valued contributors in the workplace, the classroom, and the community. Whereas Sedgwick County is committed to ensuring that the county programs and employment practices effectively serve and benefit persons of all abilities in order to support individual dignity, self-reliance, and productive lives for all people. And whereas Sedgwick County is proud to renew its dedication to fostering equal access and demonstrating commitment to full inclusion of people with disabilities, now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Disability Employment Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of persons with disabilities throughout our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, move to approve.
I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner.
Hold one second, Madam Clerk. We might be having some audio issues with Commissioner Meitzner. And while we test that mic, in the meantime, Commissioner, if you might just give a thumbs up if it's a yes, would that work, Commissioner?
That would be sufficient, Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead and call the roll again.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And this is being accepted today by Jason Crippper, the owner of What's Next Employment Services. Thank you so much for being here.
Hi. First of all, thank you for reading that. That really means a great deal to me. Besides owning a business, I'm also a transition coordinator in Goddard. So I work to help families of students with special needs figure out their trajectory. So this is a really near and dear thing to my heart. I've also got Kirsten and Dee here. They both work at Ability Point. They have for 10 years each, right? So that's a lot of years. They do a great job. I just want to say, you know, our community has been very, very welcoming of people with disabilities. Sometimes it takes finding that right fit, how's it going to work? But there's a lot of openness. But it is up to all of us to step up to the plate and think outside the box and figure out, where could I fit someone? What would it look like? And I mean, that's a wonderful part of my job, is I get to kind of help facilitate those things. But I really am appreciative of our whole community and you guys as a commission recognizing this. So thank you very much.
Commissioner, thank you, first of all. And you've got some wonderful people with you. And we all know you because you're famous. You won an award through Ability Point just a few years ago. And we're grateful for all that you did and what you represent and the way you handled yourself. It's called, what was it called? Miss? Miss Unstoppable. That's exactly what it was. And you, that whole year that you were Miss Unstoppable, you represented Ability Point and so well. So we were grateful for all that you did. There's some questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate you allowing me to read that proclamation. Right now, in the state of Kansas, there's a huge waiting list on people being served by our state for people with disabilities. When I say a huge waiting list, it's over 10 years.
Yes.
If you're born today, you're going to be 10 years old before you're going to get your first services. If you're any age whatsoever, a minimum of 10 years. And on top of that, it may be longer because the state put a cap of 6,500 people on the waiting list. And there's more than that that need services from the state of Kansas. So this continues to be one of our issues that we put on our legislative agenda. And we're going to continue to fight to make sure that all people in Sedgwick County, whether they're disabled or have any other handicap whatsoever, that they are treated equally and that they get the services that are needed. So thank you, sir, for what you do to help the disabled. But our CDDO folks are working that each and every day, and we appreciate what they do. But it is a strong concern of mine, and I've urged us to put that on our legislative agenda each and every year. We gained a little bit last year because they put, I think, $5 million or something in to help.
Yeah, they knocked off 500 spots.
And that helped a little, but it didn't solve the problem. So we're going to continue to fight. So again, thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please hang out. We want to make sure we get a picture. So we're going to do one more proclamation. We'll take about a five-minute break and go out and get a picture. But we want to celebrate this proclamation and celebrate all the work that you do. So again, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring National Foster Youth Voice Month.
Okay, wonderful proclamation, something very personal to me. So I'm honored to read a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas every voice matters, using your voice effectively is a powerful tool to affect change. That's why the Selfless Love Foundation began declaring October as Foster Youth Voice Month in 2019. And whereas, through impactful stories from young people who have been in the child welfare system, the national campaign will help to change the lives of foster children now and into the future. And whereas, fostering the voices of youth in our community is essential to promoting their well-being, empowerment, and resilience. And whereas, by recognizing and supporting foster youth, we contribute to creating a nurturing environment that facilitates their transition into adulthood with confidence and success. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Foster Youth Voice Month. And we encourage all citizens to recognize and support the voices of foster youth that are in our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve as read. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is my friend Alexandria Ware of Culture Creations Inc.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys today?
Good.
Good. Well, thank you so much for doing this. Like Commissioner Ryan said, I'm Alexandria. I run Culture Creations. And there's several of my friends who I get to work with in child welfare who are here to celebrate this wonderful proclamation and amplify youth voice. And it's something we do all year round, but it's the one month where it's, we get to see it. And we get to make sure that all the nonprofits that work in child welfare, our placement agencies, DCF, Ryac, everyone, make sure that our young people know that they are the most powerful in the room and their voice matters. And we are going to continue on the march and making sure that their voices are always used. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I've got a few. What you do and the way in which you do your business is really impressive. I met you a few years ago, and I listened to your stories, and I listened to how you advocate for children that are vulnerable in our community. And it inspired me. And I would, I would say that it's inspired a lot of people. Many of them are in the room today. Your advocacy and your example and your life experience through the foster care system, which you share. And you share the challenges and the impact. I see in the room today, we have DeNise Wonger from DCF, our regional coordinator. I see people from Gathered Strong. There's Jay Hedrick. She's a superhero. I see Casa people in here. There's all kinds of people in the room that touch this system and support the work that you do. There's close to 1,400 kids in Sedgwick County that are in the foster care system. Over 70% of these kids at some point in time will have a touch point in the criminal justice system. Only 40% are going to graduate high school. One out of four of these kids are going to end up homeless when they age out. One out of four of these kids are going to end up homeless when they age out of the foster care system. And this is something that I believe truly, that if we were to take a bull's eye at the foster care system and really look at how we become more preventative instead of just reactive, that we can change the trajectory in this community in less than a decade. I'm grateful that there are people that are doing exactly that, that there's innovative ideas, the faith community's getting involved. All these people in this room that have touched this system so many times for so many years, we're standing on their shoulders now to advance it forward. And you're one of those people. So I just want you to know from my seat and from this commission, how grateful we are for the work that you and all your colleagues do in this space. You're saving kids' lives.
Thank you. Also, KHF and KLC are here, too, and they, they help out with a lot in child welfare as well.
They sure do. I see them, yeah.
Yeah. So thank you, guys. And thank you for all the work you do and all the advocacy you do to make sure that it's not just a statewide position, but it's a county position and city position as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Why don't we celebrate these two organizations? And if you'll give us the grace of just five minutes, we're going to go out and take some pictures, then we'll be right back. So stay on your best behavior. on your best behavior. ... in this community. So, back to work we go. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, Item D, Accept the Resignation of Dave Fulton from the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
County Councilor, Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Councilor. This item is to accept the resignation of Dave Fulton from the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. Mr. Fulton's tendered his resignation. He did indicate he's very thankful for having been allowed to serve the most vulnerable members in our community. Recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, Air Force retired Colonel Chaplin Dave Fulton has been a great representative for me on this board. I appreciated everything he did. He has other opportunities ahead of him right now, and so he's asked to resign from this board. He's going to be very difficult to replace because he was extremely qualified, and I have a lot of respect for him. So, it's with regret that I moved that we accept his resignation.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Can you hear me?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Fulton, for your service on that board. Next item, please.
New Business, Item E, ZON 2024-00031, Zone Change Request in the County from R.R. Rural Residential to G.C. General Commercial to Permit Construction Sales and Service Limited to a Tree Service with an Office and a Parking Area for Commercial Vehicles and Single Family Residential Located on the Southwest Corner of North 127th Street East and East 56th Street North.
Very impressive, Clerk. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Wagner from the Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item. So, this item, this, first off, as you heard, the applicant is requesting to change the zoning of the subject site outlined in the blue-green color here from Rural Residential to G.C. General Commercial. This item is being heard today because it was sent back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration and also because protests have been received against the application. In terms of the request, the application is in response to the applicant receiving a notice violation for illegal use in violation of the zoning code, and there were two of those. The applicant's request is changed over time, and I'll cover that during the timeline of events review. At this time, the applicant is requesting zoning that will allow for the following uses: a tree service business, which is categorized as construction, sales, and service in the Unified Zoning Code; a parking lot for commercial trucks; an office for his business; and an existing single-family dwelling on the site. In terms of the property, as you can see here, the site is located southwest corner of 127th Street and 56th Street North. Subject site is approximately 10.7 acres in size. It's zoned Rural Residential and is currently developed with a single-family house and three other structures. Believe they include a barn and a large shed. The subject site is within the urban growth area and zoning area of influence for the city of Bel Air. In terms of context, property to the north, southeast, and west are all zoned Rural Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings. In terms of the staff report, staff report provides information about development standards and screening. There's a timeline of events that's also included in the staff report, and I'll do, try and do a brief overview of that. So, the applicant has indicated they moved the tree service to this, to this property in early 2023. Over time, the applicant then was cited twice for a violation of the Unified Zoning Code in terms of uses that aren't allowed on the property. On May 30th, the Planning Department received and processed the application submitted by the applicant to rezone the subject site from Rural Residential to General Industrial. On July 11th, the MAPC convened and heard the case. During the presentation, the applicant changed the request from G.C. to limited commercial and indicated a willingness to accept a protective overlay and also added a number of uses that were unknown to planning staff at the time. The MAPC, the Planning Commission, voted to defer the request until August 8th to give time for staff and the applicant to discuss. And as part of that, I do want to point out that members of the audience were asked if they would be okay with coming back on August 8th, and they indicated that they were. After the MAPC meeting, the Planning Commission, the applicant sent a narrative with his vision for the property, and a number of uses were listed in there. The applicant also stated would not engage in open burning but would manage organic waste using an incinerator or transporting it off-site. So, after reviewing the applicant's narrative that was submitted, planning staff determined that LC zoning wouldn't, wouldn't quite work, and G.C. would be required. So, the applicant amended his request to go with G.C. and with a protective overlay, which is described in the staff report. On August 8th, the Planning Commission convened and heard the case. The MAPC voted to recommend denial. That vote was nine to zero. Twelve members of the public spoke during that meeting. A number of them had concerns regarding large piles of brush, traffic, and other details indicated in the staff report. On August 8th, that same day, the Bel Air Planning Commission considered the case. Their Planning Commission recommended denial four to one. And that, at that meeting, there were two members who spoke in opposition, two members of the public who spoke in opposition to the application. On August 19th, the Citizen Advisory Board for District One heard the case and recommended denial by a vote of five to one. Two members of the public spoke against the application. Then, during the protest period, nine protests were received for the case. They constituted just over 32% of the protest area, which exceeds the 20% threshold established by the state. Therefore, any vote to approve the, the application would require four out of five votes. On September 18th, the Board of County Commissioners, you heard the case. Three members of the public spoke in opposition. Three members of the public spoke in support of the application. The B OCC sent the application back to the MAPC for additional consideration, indicating the desire for planning staff to identify additional restrictions that might still allow the business to operate in the area, but also address some of the concerns that have been voiced. After the B OCC meeting, the applicant called planning staff. Planning staff encouraged the applicant to indicate what changes, if any, they would like to make to their application. On the September 23rd, planning staff contacted the applicant, called the applicant. The applicant indicated that he would like to remove all uses that he had previously considered as part of the application other than the following: the tree service business, which is construction, sales, and service; parking lot; office for the business; and the use of the existing single-family dwelling. On October 2nd, planning staff emailed the applicant, notified him of the scheduled MAPC meeting, and this one was a relatively short turnaround based on state statute, that once we get the minutes from you all that have been approved, we are responsible for getting it to the Planning Commission at the next meeting. So, we worked to do that. So, we were letting the applicant know about that. The applicant didn't respond, but we did work on a protective overlay based on the discussion at the B OCC level. On October 9th, planning staff called the applicant to ensure that he had received the email and was aware of the new schedule. The applicant indicated he had not seen the October 2nd email and indicated that he was traveling to Florida for the cleanup efforts after the hurricane and would not be able to attend the MAPC meeting, the Planning Commission meeting, the next day. During the phone conversation, planning staff provided an overview, the drafted P.O. The applicant stated he agreed with everything except for Item 2 of the revised protective overlay. He indicated his preference was to plant cedar trees along the property lines instead of the berm, which was recommended. The applicant requested a copy of the staff report, and staff sent that to him on October 9th. The next day, on October 10th, the Planning Commission reconsidered the case. The applicant did not attend the meeting but had his company office manager attend as his agent. Seven members of the public spoke in opposition to the request with concerns that are identified in the staff report. The Planning Commission considered the amended application and recommended denial, and that vote was nine to zero. So, in terms of the recommended action, the recommendation coming to you from the Planning Commission is for denial, which requires just a simple majority or three of five votes. Alternatives include the following: you can override the Planning Commission and approve the application. This would require four out of five votes. You can also override the MAPC, approve the zone change with a protective overlay, which is identified in the staff report. That also would require four out of five votes. And so, with that, I'll take you through some of the images and graphics. So, here is the, an aerial showing the site. You can see outlined in the blue-green color. Here's the zoning for the area. It's predominantly Rural Residential, all surrounding the subject site. You can see where the city of Bel Air's city boundaries are in the bold blue line to the south and west. This was an explanation about why G.C. is needed for the construction, sales, and service, the type that was proposed in the application. This is the map showing the urban influence and urban growth areas. So, you can see that this one, property is in the Bel Air urban growth areas and urban areas of influence. Again, similar map, just showing this one as the urban growth areas. Here's the map showing the protests that were received. Again, it's over the 20% threshold, just over 32%. The blue colors indicate protests that were received outside of the protest area. Here are photos from the site. So, here's the home, one of the other structures. This is looking at some of the surrounding properties. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Very good, Scott. Appreciate the update. Before we get into discussion and questions, I want to give the commission an opportunity to disclose whether you've had any new expertise communication or contacts since September 18th or when the B OCC first heard this hearing. So, I want to give us the opportunity to do that. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I have received emails and phone calls, so I have had expertise. I can still make an informed decision. Thank you.
I also have had emails and phone calls since our September 18th B OCC meeting. I'll maintain an open mind, continue to listen to any new information that'll be presented.
Same. I've had emails and a couple of voicemails.
And Chairman, I have received several emails and several phone calls. I've engaged in a few conversations, but again, I'm completely waiting to hear the evidence today. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
We can, yes, sir.
Okay, yes. And, and yes, I have received a handful of communications, both emails and phone calls, and always eager to know if there's any new information before I make a decision. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Scott, appreciate that update. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for Scott at this time?
Good.
Okay, seeing none, we'd invite the applicant to come and share. A couple notes here as we enter into this phase of this hearing. Since you've already had the initial hearing, what we're asking for is when we get into the public comment piece of this, is just three minutes of comment. We're also asking that you limit the comment to anything that would be new. New information, new details. We've already got in the meeting minutes and already heard the original case. So, for effort of not being redundant, we just ask you and recommend that you just provide some new information in your comments. So, good morning, welcome.
Hey, how are you guys?
Yeah, so the, he was saying that I didn't make it to that meeting. We were in South Carolina. It was kind of weird. He, so I've been having a hard time getting them to answer my calls, and then he called me, and we're in the middle of, they're tearing down the camper that I was living in, and they're moving it to Florida, and they were also moving us to Florida for the power company. He calls, and they're literally tearing down the camper, and he's like, hey, you got a meeting tomorrow. And I'm like, well, I can't make it, you know? I'm in South Carolina. But, you know, if I would have got a little bit more heads up, I definitely would have made it to that meeting, you know? But a day wasn't enough where I was at. And actually, I just flew in last night to make it to this because we did know about this one. So, yeah, some of our guys are still out of state working, working in Florida. Since we met, you know, that hurricane kind of messed up our schedule a little bit. We sent five crews, five bucket trucks, mechanic, and myself out to the hurricane, and they put me in charge of, I think it was like 12, 12 crews total, and we were just getting the trees off the power lines and working for the power companies. I think they wanted my expertise to run multiple crews more than just our own company. Yeah, I wanted to talk about that a little bit. One thing I like about Kansas, so I've done this in other states, this disaster recovery and stuff like that. And you see, you know, neighbors are always pretty good at helping each other, opposed to some certain cities where they, you know, actually cause each other harm instead of helping each other. But Kansas, recently, this last year, and with the handover tornado, I saw more community help, community reaching out, help, neighbors helping neighbors than I've, than I've seen in any other state, and I thought that was really cool. We were in Harvey County before Sedgwick got a big windstorm, and what was that other city? Hallstead, yeah. And it was amazing to see, and it was really cool because it was in our own backyard, you know, because we do this all over the country, but our own backyard, we saw, you know, neighbors helping neighbors. We saw a group of Mennonite women clean up a park with no equipment or anything in like two hours. And they also cleaned up the cemetery and stuff like that. What I'm getting at is, I really like Kansas, and I don't, it's kind of weird that we're having this, this fight here in Kansas, you know? Normally, Kansas is kind of known for being hospitable and good neighbors and that kind of thing. And I, that's what I wish to do in this scenario, and I wish- of thing, and I, that's what I wish to do in this scenario, and I wish the neighbors and our guys do as well. I think we've addressed a lot of the concerns of the neighbors. You know, I went around in the beginning, and I asked, you know, what are, if there's issues, what are the issues, you know? And some of them didn't like to see the trucks, so, you know, we built, since then, we've built up the berm bigger. It can be seen from the railroad track and also from the front entrance. We plan to install a gate at the front entrance, and we can panel it with wood, so they can't see down the drive. We plan to plant, plant trees on the berm, and that's included in our proposal here. And then trees all around the property, cedar trees, as a green screen, you know? So, that was one of the complaints, was seeing the trees. The other is the traffic, you know? The traffic is, is really minimal, you know? It's not like we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of trucks every day, or even like a concrete plant, where they come in, they get concrete, they go, they come in, you know? We leave once, we come back, you know? I don't really think that's much of an issue. We tried to address that the best we could, you know, by minimizing the dust. We just slowed their speeds down. We said, okay, you know, just slow down on the road, and that'll minimize dust, and try to appease the neighbors the best we can. Oh, some of the other complaints, I mean, what I'm getting at is, we've tried to be the best neighbor we can. The burning was a huge issue, right? So, we actually didn't plan on burning on the side at all. We moved in, we were only there for about a week, and we moved in. We didn't even have all of our trucks there. Like, most of the neighbors had more vehicles or farm equipment or whatever than we did. And we got a complaint. You know, Caesar comes walking up the driveway, and he says, you know, we got that complaint. And he said, Scott said, two violations. So, actually, what happened was, we got that, that original complaint, and we were going to court for it, and Caesar came back to take his pictures. And I respectfully asked Caesar, I was like, hey, can you take your pictures from the street? You know? And he, he agreed to that, and then when they went to court, they dropped those charges because, or they dropped the fine because they couldn't see anything from the street. So, then we got another complaint, and that's when Caesar started taking his pictures from the railroad track, you know? Since then, we have built the berm up to cover the railroad track, and we continue to, you know, we're going to continue to do more for that effort if they don't want to see the trucks. The brush pile, you know, we've heard that a lot. We did not burn that brush pile, so we moved the brush pile out by hand this time, and that cost a lot more than it would've to burn it, obviously. But we just, we just did it, you know, to be considered of the neighbors. And that's, that's the kind of behavior that I want to continue, and I want, hopefully the neighbors can do the same, be considered neighbors, us as well as them, you know? We're just here, we're just trying to make a living, you know? I'm not really happy with this agreement they put together, but, you know, I think the, the job of the planning department should be to balance the needs of the community, you know, as well as businesses or whoever, and kind of come to a happy medium. In there, they limited it to twenty-five employees, so, you know, that doesn't, that's not great for us, but that's, you know, it'll, it'll work for now, so. And then the berm thing, I didn't want to do the berm because it'll affect drainage on the, we're going to flood adjoining properties, so I don't think that's a good idea. Because if we built a berm along this back here, you know, it would, it would disrupt the water flow, unless we made breaks in there, but, yeah, so you'd get more water in this property and this property if we were to do berms all the way around, you know? But I think trees is a great alternative, plus we like trees, so. Some of the other complaints, Scott, what have they been? The burning was the biggest issue, you know, and we're agreeing to not burn anymore. We have showed our effort to remove the piles, you know, since our last meeting even. That was a lot of effort. That was truckloads and truckloads of debris coming out of there, so, but we did that. Yeah. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay. Very good. Appreciate your feedback and insight. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you. Just thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coming to speak with us again. Just want to get back to, sort of by the notification information at the beginning of your, of your comments here. Did you verify when you got back from your trip that you did, in fact, have those notifications waiting for you?
Do we ever, do we ever get anything from them? So, I know I've answered every single phone call that they have called me about, or voicemail or text or whatever. I'm not so sure about any mail, but I've had a hard time getting a hold of them. You know, I've called them repeatedly. I called Scott the day we left here. He answered, and he referred it to Brad. I called Brad, and I got a voicemail, but I kept calling him. You know, I was trying to get, get something going right away when I was, you know, not out of state. We kind of talked about getting together, and then we never got together, and now here we are again. But, yeah, my biggest issue with that was, I was just having a hard time getting a hold of them, you know? When I had free time available to discuss the topics, they didn't, I guess.
So, you did not, you never did see that you received an email?
I did not.
Okay.
We got a piece of paper in the mail that I was handed this morning.
Did you, I, I don't know if Scott can confirm this or not, but I, I don't know if you even considered having someone speak on your behalf, represent your interest at that meeting. Sometimes people actually hire attorneys to do that, believe it or not, to represent their interest in, in these public hearings, because it does impact the decisions that are being made. So, not having an appearance there, I don't, did anybody there, anybody speak on your behalf at that meeting?
Griselda did.
She did? Okay. Good. All right. And then, I think earlier, I heard Scott or someone say that your intent is to not burn, but is to use a incendiary, an incinerator, or to?
No, there's a lot of misinformation in this. No.
So, how do you plan on getting rid of the tree debris? What's your plan?
We have places in Harvey County, Butler County, and Cedric County that don't have issues.
Okay. I don't know if that's, if that information, if those conditions are part of this, if those conditions are articulated in this agreement, in this zoning?
I think it just says not to bring tree debris, tree debris back, and no burning is allowed.
And you're, and you're intending to follow that?
Correct.
I'm not quite sure why he mentioned the word incineration earlier, but we'll get to that in a minute. So, you talk about sales and service. What are you planning on doing for sales and service? This is, this is not just operating your tree business out of there, but it's also talking about sales and service and the material.
That's just what they call it, but yeah, we just want to do it.
There's no retail sales, there's no?
No.
Okay. All right. I'm going to stand by for other questions, but I may have, I may have another one or two here in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Seeing none, don't go far. We'll open it up for some public comment on this. A couple reminders again. Number one is, since we've already had this hearing, we're going to limit public comment to three minutes. Our friendly county clerk will keep a clock and let you know when we're winding down. We just ask you to honor that time. The other thing is, we're asking and recommending that it's only new information, based on what we've heard from the original September eighteenth hearing. Everything is in the minutes. We've reviewed the minutes. We were all able to, to listen and discern the information that was provided then, so the recommendation is that you provide new information that you see as pertinent. With that being said, when you come up, three minutes, just give your name and address for the record. I'd like to invite up Alan, forgive me on last names if I mispronounce, but I think it's Ivory or Everi?
Everi.
Good morning, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
I'll be real quick. My name's Alan Everi. I live at five-six-zero-one North One-twenty-third East. I am within the boundary, zoning boundary. I have lived out there for forty years, and my only comment is, I sent each of the commissioners a letter stating what has transpired over the last forty years, most recently twenty years, regarding people that have moved out and done just what Mr. Phillips did, moved in without checking zoning, built buildings, and the planning commission came in and recommended that they be denied zoning, changing zoning, because of putting a commercial business right in the middle of rural residential. And I just don't understand how you can go and dead-center a rural residential, change zoning to commercial. And that's my only thoughts. I let everybody else talk about traffic and all that stuff, but I will speak one thing. I am on the township board, and we're a little concerned about the traffic with big trucks and stuff, as far as maintaining roads. But whatever the decision is, we'll have to abide by maintaining roads, but we do kind of have an issue with that. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Everi, thank you, sir, for your comments. We appreciate it. One second, please. Commissioner Howe?
Just, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to clarify that final comment you made regarding the township's opinion. Did they meet and vote to establish a board opinion on that?
Yes, we did.
They did?
And, and the letter was sent to Mr. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah.
In regards to the decision.
But you also do live within that notification radius?
I live within the boundary.
Did you also vote for that? I mean, did the township board, they voted for this, this opinion of the board, but you also were one of the people that voted on that, on that?
Yes, I did. I probably should have abstained, but the letter I sent you was my personal letter, as not part of my position on the township board.
Okay. And I'll just, to make a comment, you're welcome to sit down, but I'll make a comment on, on that point. We heard from our public works last meeting that these roads are designed to handle this kind of traffic. That's what they're for, and there's an obligation of the township officials?
Yeah.
To maintain, to maintain roads, and?
That's like we said, if we, if you guys approve it, we have no alternative but to maintain it.
And I, and I did suggest, and apparently got this, this got twisted, but I suggested that the applicant reach out to the township to see if there's any, any agreement, they could make a private agreement between the township and, and the applicant to, to, again, that's not something I want to get involved in. We're not going to get involved in this, but there are, there are situations where a governing body would make an agreement with some, some entity in their district. It's called, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. Find an agreement that would satisfy maybe the extra work that's going to have to happen on behalf of the township because of the extra traffic. And so, I'm not suggesting this is something we would get involved in in any way. I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to do that. But I, I was hoping that the applicant and the township would get together, and it kind of work out some of their, some of the conflict between the two ideas, but that aside, that doesn't have to happen, it was just an idea. But that got twisted. Someone made some comments about, I was saying that this had, that something had to happen, and that's, and that's just not true. This is something that the private sector needs to deal with. If, if there's going to be something, then the two, the two entities can get together, we've got an arrangement, that's what they want, want to do, but?
There's a lot of things that floated around?
Yeah.
Since this zoning started, so.
Anyway, since, are there other members of the township board here today?
No.
Okay. So, you're speaking as, as a resident, but not as a township official? All right. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Everi, thank you, sir. Appreciate your feedback. Next up is Norma Woltie. And then after Ms. Woltie would be Donna Morris.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Just three minutes, if you can give, there you go. You know the rule.
Address is one-three-five-zero-four, East Fifty-Fifth Street North. I own part of the road that is adjacent to Mr. Phillips. That puts me within distance. I want to thank you all for all that you've been through. This has exacerbated, it's almost two years now. That's a long time to be going through this. When he moved in there as a resident and to perform business, wrong. It's just wrong. Fighting for it this long, it's a little wrong. The things that we've witnessed, the only new thing that I can possibly think of, other than all the crap that's been going on. When he was at my house, he said to me, and to someone else, that he has done work for the city, worked for W S U, worked for the zoo, worked for Cessna. He says that on his website as well. Knowing, he said, knowing the right people and the support that he has from his family and friends, has made his business what it is. Take that however you want. I take it in the wrong way, for I'm not liking hearing telling me that he's doing work for the city. I pray, and I ask, that that does not influence you in any way, for just doing what he did as buying a residential and running a business, wrong. I thank you.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Next up, Ms. Donna Morris. And then after Ms. Morris, it would be Rusty Riggan. Ms. Morris, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Donna Morris. I live at fifty-seven-fifty-seven North One-twenty-third Street East. I'm asking you to please deny the zoning change from rural residential to commercial. It's been denied over and over. We've gone to meeting after meeting after meeting. It's definitely not any change that any of the neighbors want. We are all opposed to the zoning change. The traffic is still horrendous out there. It's just not a good fit for the neighborhood. It's a rural residential neighborhood, and we want to keep the peace and quiet. The brush piles and the tree piles are still there. Yes, they have been reduced, but they are still there. There are still trees on the property. Not everything is gone. One thing I've heard about Mr. Phillips' rights, as a business owner, and how you can protect the rights to run a business, I would like to ask your, ask you who is going to protect all the rights that the landowners around him? All of us have lived there from anywhere from thirty to fifty years. Don't we matter at all? We chose to live here in a rural residential area for peace and quiet, country living. You want us to change because Mr. Phillips brought property in a rural residential area? Who's going to stand up for us? I have read the golden rules, and he is breaking a lot of them. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Rusty Riggan, and then Nadine Smith. Good morning, sir. Welcome.
Good morning. Rusty Riggan, one-three-zero-two-nine, East Fifty-third Street North. And I'll be brief, just have a few things. I live just outside the one-thousand-feet line, which I don't know if I can show it on here or not. Oh, right here. One of the points I wanted to make, I don't think came up in the last meeting, is Fifty-Fifth Street, Norma spoke about this, but their driveway intersects, it's, they have to face these trucks right across the road there. And they don't have any other ingress or egress, so they're kind of stuck with that. Their mailboxes are all right there. So, whether they're within the thousand feet or not, it definitely impacts them. The same with the people that live on Fifty-Sixth Street. When they enter and exit, that's the only way in and out. So, all those people have to watch themselves when they exit there, because the railroad tracks are elevated, and if you have a semi coming over those tracks, and you're not careful, you're going to have a problem. So, it does impact a lot of people just on the traffic thing, and the traffic's one of our big issues. I realize there's a hurricane going on and a lot of things, but I can guarantee you that our group has not missed any meetings. We, we were at that M A P C meeting for five hours. None of us wanted to miss our opportunity. We check the websites, we make phone calls, we make darn sure that we're not missing this, because it is important to us and our families. So, I hate to hear all these reasons why meetings are missed and emails aren't answered. When you have a staff, you can make sure you don't miss that stuff. And I would just like to mention one more thing. I had some conversations with M A B C D about their involvement in this and all the problems and history, and I would love to hear more. And I would love to hear more about the history of resolving the grievances because if this does pass, there's a good chance that possibly all these rules are not going to be followed going forward. And I would like people to know how it's gone for us so far and for their department as to how this could affect us going forward if these rules are not followed, followed, if it did pass. How hard is it going to be to stay within those guidelines? So I'd love to have somebody talk about that if someone is here and would share that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Happy to honor that request. Uh, Mr. Counselor, would you be able to give any insight as to what happens if there's violations to zone, zoning regulations?
Certainly, Chairman. If, if there are, traditionally on these we're complaint driven as the way the county handles this, if complaints come in, those get routed through MABCD staff, they investigate the complaints. Any of the complaints where there's sufficient evidence, a matter can be prosecuted in county court. It's a code violation and classified misdemeanor offenses. So there is an ability, we have to prove any elements beyond a reasonable doubt, and they're entitled a right to a trial just like anyone else, uh, in front of county court judges. Any other questions on that, Chairman?
No. I appreciate that insight. Thank you, Mr. Riggins. Appreciate that. Okay. Next up, Ms. Nadine Smith, and then finally, Michael Moore. Good morning, ma'am.
Morning. Hi. My name is Nadine Smith. I live at 5445 North 127th Street East. This is my property. It butts right there with his. Um, I've been out, I bought my property in 2003. Since Mr. Phillips has purchased his property here and he loaded this section of his property up with all of his tree debris. All is left is a little over here, and then he's got a whole row hidden behind his, um, berm over here. I have battled mice, rats, and all kind of other vermin at, in my property since all of his tree debris was created. When he did his first burn, well, since they, since they were loaded, and then when he burnt the first time, the massive amount of rodents that infested my house, they chewed holes in my roof, they chewed holes in my floor, they chewed holes in my dryer bit to come inside. I have battled them since the, the time he started loading up those trees. I got it somewhat under control, but this, since his words today of him picking up all that stuff and moving it, which he did move quite a bit of it, but like I say, he still has more, um, I had another influx of mice and rats and crap in my house. Now I know why. I am begging you, please do not let him get this place rezoned for my health. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your testimony. And finally, uh, Michael Moore. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Michael Moore. I'm at 13200 East 55th Street North. Mr. Phillips owns the Wichita Tree Company, which you know, which is, uh, how you run this cursor. This is the Greenwood Homeowners Association, right here, this whole road. We own the road, we own the easements and everything. It's all legal downtown, all printed up. There's $1.5 million worth of homes and property right here on this road. This is the only way we can leave, and we are inundated with massive traffic on this road. You've got to stop to get your mail and wait for the traffic to leave. Now, somebody's put up some of those, uh, rubber things that showed the traffic, it was up for three days, and they were out of state. Actually, it's been kind of calm, but they're still doing their traffic, what they're doing here in town. But anyway, when they all come back and reform, as he said, and it's not big enough for him yet, he's going to want to do all this right here in R and R zoning. We, we got Hay Meadows and Alfalfa and Brom and all that because this is R and R. And we supply all that to all the surrounding areas for their horses and our cattle. We're out in the country. We used to be out in the country. But Mr. Phillips has showed up and he's done what he's done. You've all got all the information. This is, it's ridiculous. We've been to all these hearings over and over. We're all here again. This needs to stop, needs to go back to R and R. And that's about as respectful as I can say what we've put up with. And you've, you've got all the evidence. It's ridiculous that you got a huge book of this. I got a book of it at the house, and there's no reason I even have to go through all this. But anyway, we respectfully and strongly ask you to deny totally. No traffic, no mechanical stuff. He wants to bring his trucks in and service all of his trucks. You're going to have the same problem. I mean, we've all abided by the law, and here we are, falling on the sword again, asking you to please make a logical decision. Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore, appreciate your comments. That's final comments for the public comment piece of it. Um, we always, it's tradition, we allow the applicant to come back and, and finish some comments. Um, I would just say that, uh, all the information and all the hearings, the property rights is a big deal. Um, and there's a lot of information that come with property rights, property rights of the applicants and the property rights of those that are surrounding. Um, and a long time ago, before any of us were here, this community and this society decided that we were going to live by zoning regulations and zoning laws. And, um, and because of that, when we take hearings and we have conversations and we do research on these things, it takes a lot of time because property rights is a big deal to people in this community, in this county. So, um, we appreciate the comments, the applicant, if you'd like to, uh, Mr. Phillips, if you'd like to share, uh, we're happy to have you share one more time, and then we'll bring it back to the bench. So this would just be in relation to the comments, if any corrections or anything added in sight?
Um, to, you know, Nadine's thing, um, so we do have wood and wood only right around this area. Uh, the brush piles have been removed. So if we were to get denied today, you know, the plan is we're going to sell firewood there, which we're allowed to do in a rural residential. I think we're allowed 100, 100,000 square feet and four employees, aside from anyone that doesn't live on property. So that's probably going to stay if we get denied. So if we get approved, we're going to have to remove that because I think everything says, you know, no lumber, no firewood, just the tree service aspect. Um, so since we don't really know what the decision's going to be, we did leave the firewood there. But the brush, the big brush piles are all gone. In regard to the rats, we, we did have mice in the building when we moved in, actually, not in the house. Cats kind of took care of that, and we got some traps, you know? I'd recommend those sticky traps. They work good.
I have missed my house.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think your dogs are kind of scaring away cats and stuff, so...
Sir, if we can...
Anyways.
If we can bring this back here, I think the decorum should be respectful here.
But actually, we don't have any problems with that anymore. We removed some old appliances that were in there that had, you know, mice nests in it and stuff. Russell just said he hasn't seen a single, single mouse in his house that's on the property that we're discussing, so, um, actually, I haven't either. I've just seen the mouse droppings in the, in the office there. Yeah, I mean, either way, we're, if we get denied, we're going to do a firewood thing there, um, and we're allowed to do that, so I think that's what we'll do. Um, you know, if we get approved, we're going to, we plan to remove the firewood. Either way, we still plan to be the best neighbors that we possibly can be, you know? The firewood probably will be a little bit noisy, and I'm sure we'll hear about that, but, um, because chainsaws running during the day, you know, they're loud. So I actually think that the neighbors would like it better if we got this zoning approved opposed to if we did not and were running four chainsaws all day long. But we also can't just not use the property that we bought, you know? So anyways, you guys have a good day.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Any, uh, questions or comments from the commissioner? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions for Scott. So Scott, I'm wondering, why, why does this have to be a rezoning versus a conditional use?
In this case, it's because of the uses that were proposed. They require, uh, in this case, GC general commercial zoning.
And that specifically, the, the use that you're referring to is, is the vehicles being on the property or what is the, what's the, uh, what's the trigger for that?
For, uh, to my knowledge, it is the, uh, tree service business because it's classified as, uh, construction, sales, and service. And LC would have worked, except that LC is limited to, uh, the commercial, the, the buying and selling of, of things. In order to have the service as he wants for the operating, the tree business, he's got to have the GC zoning to do that.
So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand, though, the only, the only, uh, element of his business that would be visible would be people coming, parking their cars, getting into a truck and leaving, and then come back later in the day, park the truck, get back in the car and then leave again. That's the nature of the business. What am I missing? That's, that's really why I see it. That's, that's what we're down to is that is specifically what's going to happen on the, on the property.
Yes, and this is, this has shifted a little bit over time over the course of the case. So yes, my understanding is that the applicant at this point is requesting, uh, the zoning to allow for his tree service business, which is categorized as construction, sales, and service in the zoning code, a parking lot, the ability to park commercial trucks at the property, uh, and, uh, the ability to use the existing single-family dwelling as a residence. That's, that's what I believe that we're down to in terms of, uh, the applicant's request.
So I have a property in my district, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, oh, I'm sure I'm going to get into the details here. It's a property in my district, I think it's family-based, they have a lot of semi-trucks that are there. They do washing, they wash them, they maintain them, and they park them when they're not on the road, but they, they park quite a few semi-trucks. But it's a family-based business, but there's a lot of them there. So I don't know how many, let's say 10 or more semi-trucks are there, and it's, it's still rural residential. They're not, that's been allowed to operate, and there's been no citations from anybody, and there's been complaints from neighbors. Apparently, that's okay. So how is this different?
Uh, in, this one would be in terms of the, my, I'm not recalling the specifics on that case. There is, uh, you can have a home occupation with a limited number of employees, up to four, that does not include the owner or occupant of the property. There are also limitations then, not only on employees, but also the amount of surface area that can be used for the, for the parking of vehicles, so for storage of vehicles as well. So those, I, I believe, in this case, uh, the issue here, the, in, in my mind, the one that comes to, to the forefront is the number of employees, so the scale of the operation, and then also the fact that he's operating a business, a service business, from the property. That's what's causing me to require that addition.
His final comments, if he was to do what he just talked about a moment ago, let's say he has four employees that are dropping off enormous, you know, there's, there's, they're going to be bringing in enormous amounts of wood and, and doing, uh, firewoods. I'm just, I'm just curious, uh, if customers come in and out to buy firewood and they stack it up on their property and then cut it up on the property, does that allow them to the rural residential?
I am going to look to staff, but my reading is that they're allowed to have the four employees that do not reside at the property work there, as well as up to 10,000 square feet for outdoor storage.
And those activities of, of preparing firewood and selling firewood with customers coming and going, that would be allowed?
Yes. Yes, as a home occupation, that would be.
So again, so what's called, the, the classification, the, the adjectives being used here, you know, commercial, uh, business that does construction, sales, and service, and, uh, and those adjectives don't really describe this business very well. That may be what we have in zoning that, that captures this type of business, but really, it's not construction, it's really not sales, it's vehicles that are parked there, and then they pick them up, they take them out, bring them back and park them again. That's really, there's no construction happening, there's no sales happening, but yet that's the zoning classification we have before us.
It, it is, yes, sir. And, and that comes down to the definitions that are in the zoning code.
I'll tell you what, to his last comment, I, you know, I, I don't know how this is going to turn out, I have no idea, but I do think that the, the folks are not going to be hap, the neighbors are not going to be happy with his, with his, uh, consolation, uh, at, you know, planned activity of, of bringing in wood. And by the way, rural residential, they can burn firewood too. There's no, there's no limits on burning if it's a rural residential.
Well, there's some caveats. My understanding is that if it's for commercial purposes, that's, that's covered under the zoning code and restricted. If you're doing it for your individual property, sure, but if you're doing it as part of a business operation, you, it will require additional zoning.
Okay, so the home-based business that does burning would be, would be prohibited?
That's correct. The burning would be. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I hope they understand that. In terms of the noise that's generated or the traffic from customers, that's all not part of this concern.
No, sir, there's not regulations that directly affect those.
I have a feeling he's going to do exactly what he just said he's going to do. So I, I guess I'm looking at this, uh, having 30 vehicles come in, uh, come in and, and, you know, leave and come back, you know, throughout the day and having, uh, 20 or 30 or 40 vehicles, uh, come in and, and, and leave at the end of the day. The number of traffic, uh, in and out of that, out of that property is around 100 or so, you know, in and out per day. Um, I don't call that massive traffic. I had someone use the word massive traffic. It doesn't sound massive to me. I don't, I am curious about the traffic counter. Is that something that we ordered? Does someone here have traffic counts for this road, uh, that they're capturing that we should hear about?
I am not aware of any traffic counts that have been conducted.
As far as I know, we didn't order that, so if there's information that someone wants to provide to us, I'd be interested in that. But last time we talked about this case, I did talk about, you know, what are the, uh, roads designed to handle and what are the, you know, what are the expectation, what 100 cars per day, you know, be some type of a, uh, concern on, on the gravel road in the township? And I, I don't believe that's, that should be, should not be considered a, a problem. So I'm looking at the, uh, the four times this has been voted upon previous to today by other boards, and there's been, uh, four times they've recommended denial, as well as MAPC make recommendations, recommendations to denial. I've read the backup material, and those four situations, they did not articulate the reasons why they voted to deny.
Yes, and I, I believe, sir, the reason for that is because those were articulated in the staff report that was presented, because at that time, the planning department's recommendation was for denial. And so, uh, oftentimes when that happens, they will recommend denial and, and that's all that we'll hear from them.
That was based on the, the very beginning of this case, when this was supposed to be other things, uh, there was recommendation for denial. Did you guys reconsider your recommendations since the very beginning?
We did not modify our recommendation after it was sent back to the MAPC.
And these four boards before us that have voted to, uh, recommendation to deny, did any of them articulate, because I don't see it in here, articulate the reasons, the rationale as to why the recommendation's for denial?
When it was last at the planning commission, uh, two of the commissioners commented before the vote that they did not see anything that had significantly changed regarding the application since the last time that they considered it. And so therefore, they felt like denial was still appropriate, and that's what they, that's what they motioned for, what the vote was for.
But this has changed since then. So I, I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned that, um, even MAPC's final touch to this, when things were, things have, were presented differently at that point, they did not articulate reasons as to why they're, why they voted unanimously, unanimously, uh, recommendation to deny.
I, the explanation that they gave was that in their minds, uh, nothing had changed significantly enough to cause them to wish to approve it, so they stuck with the recommendation of denial.
Well, I'll just say, me personally, I, this is, this is a very different, this is a disappointing case for a lot of reasons. Let me, let me just say this. If I really wanted to, um... One of the, let me make a comment, just, just the fact that we have a commercial operation in the, in the, in a rural residential neighborhood, how unusual is that? Someone made an argument, this should never happen. I mean, does it, does it happen? I mean, is this a reason for us to deny?
In, in my experience, I, I think part of it is that, um, being entirely surrounded by rural residential is a little bit different than my, what I've seen in the last four, four years. The other thing, too, is, uh, the location relative to major traffic streets that are paved to an arterial degree, um, makes it a little bit different. But no, it's not uncommon to see a mix of businesses, but... uncommon to see a mix of businesses, but the circumstances in terms of entirely surrounded by rural residential, I think is a little bit different.
But it is allowed, though. I mean, that's not a reason to deny this specifically. That's not a reason that we would have an opinion, is there?
Do you want to address that one?
If I may, just for clarification, in terms of the rationale for the MAPC's decision, their motion was based on staff recommendation, and so the staff report indicated the five reasons why it was rejected, which indicate, which is consistent with the golden rule factors. And in terms of...
Can you show me on, on the backup material, where is, where are those five reasons listed? Because there's so much information here now. I'm having travel, navigating through the page.
I don't have the exact copy that you have, but it would be on the staff report, and towards the end of the report is the recommendation for denial, and then there would be eight numbers listing.
Chairman.
In the staff report.
Could I chime in also, just to supplement what Samantha's indicated, if you look at pages 110 and 111 in your staff report, also, they were reiterated the second time I went to the planning commission, and be pages 123 and 124. Those were the planning department's recommendations. The planning commission, I believe, on both instances adopted in their motion. Is that correct, Sam?
Yes, they would have made a motion to deny based on staff recommendation, which is listed in the staff report.
And, but again, that, that list of, that list of reasons for recommendation to deny by staff was based on the initial applicant's plan that was presented to you guys from the very, very beginning?
Because the applicant's requests were a moving target, so to speak, it did come for reconsideration. The first time, after the first hearing, Brad from the planning department had reviewed the, the narrative that the applicant had sent in, and that's, so he did review it, and he did determine that limited commercial was not appropriate, and then assisted by having that protective overlay language. So throughout this case, the, the first request was just for a zoning request. The second time, it was with a zoning request with the protective overlay, and then subsequently, this last time, the protective overlay was revised. So there are, the department did make changes to their recommendations, but ultimately, since none of the major facts regarding the golden rule factors had changed, their recommendation remained the same. But they did reconsider the case, so to speak, with all the information that was provided, additional information that was provided at each event.
I have another couple of comments. I'll wait for just a minute, see if there's anybody else wants to, you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
All right, let me, let me change my direction here just a little bit. So this is, several of the people who spoke today and who spoke at the last time that we had a meeting here, many of the biggest concerns are, are by people who don't live within that 1,000-foot radius, which is fine. We want to hear from everybody. But I do think that the, the opposition is, is maybe a little overstated. Some of the folks that have, that have made the biggest, loudest complaints against this live essentially a quarter mile away, or even further, a third of a mile away. I've been, I've been tracking the addresses from, from property line to property line, as well as from building to building. These are distances, in some cases, up to basically half a mile. So having said that, if you can't, if you can't, if you can't see the property, and the, the traffic is essentially coming in and leaving, there's not a lot of noise being generated there, there's not burning being generated there, it's being hidden by, by screening, I have, I don't have a lot of personal concerns about this. However, having said that, we have five recommendations to deny. And if I want to get right down to the golden rules and say, what can we possibly do here? Let me just say also, Scott, you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, or Justin, if I'm wrong, there is a, there's a presumption of approval on property rights. It's up to the, it's up to the opposition to provide evidence that's legal for us to deny, deny someone their property rights, based on these golden factors. And it's really not extremely objective. We're trying to be objective, but it's really a bit subjective. And unfortunately, it's not a, it's not, if it was really objective, we would all agree, but it's because it's not as objective as I would like. I think we have some disagreement perhaps on how to apply these golden factors. I would say that the character of the neighborhood, I could argue that this does not fit the neighborhood. The zoning and uses of properties nearby, again, commercial in a residential neighborhood, I can see there may be some concerns there. Suitability of the subject property for the use for which it has been restricted. Does it make sense to do a tree service here at this property? I don't know that that makes a lot of sense. The extent to which the removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect the nearby property, actually, I, I think that the applicant's going to do something on this property no matter what. And y'all, the opponents to this may be disappointed or upset with how this turns out, because I think that there's going to be activity there, one way or the other. But there's going to be a detrimental effect, effect on the nearby property, in your opinion, one way or the other, I believe. A relevant gain to public health, safety, or welfare by, by the destruction of the value of the plaintiff's property as compared to hardship imposed by the individual landowner. Sounds like this guy is a, the owner, the, the business owner is very entrepreneurial. He's going to use this land in his business, one way or the other. I don't know this is going to necessarily impact him one way or the other significantly. I think his tree business will continue. I don't think he's planning to shut his tree business down, because whether we approve this or deny this, he's going to continue his, his tree business. And then recommendations of personal, of professionals, permanent and professional staff. We've heard them clearly what their recommendations are today. I would say this, I don't, I, I've done my very best to give this applicant as much room as possible to, to find a peaceable way to make this happen, and I don't think we've reached that today. I believe this is headed towards denial, and I guess I'll support that. If there's a motion that's made to deny, I'll be supporting that motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Justin Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, Counselor. And Commissioner Howell, you'd raise the question. Could you rephrase it again? I, I heard it, but I want to make sure I'm answering the right question. You'd said if Scott or I had any comments on it, I think it was about if there's a presumption that a zoning would be approved or something.
So the way I understand zoning cases is that it's up to the opponents to provide evidence in our public hearing for legitimate, legal, constitutional reasons why we can deny someone else their property rights. There's a, there's a presumption that says everyone has a right to use a property however they want to, until that use impacts other property owners who also have rights. It's up to the opponents to present that evidence, evidence that is reasonable for us to say, yes, you make a, a solid argument. If this was to happen, it is in fact impacting, it's impacting your property rights. Therefore, we, we can vote to deny the activity on the property. But there's a presumption that says that we, we would normally approve people, people using their, their property however they want to, unless there's rules, regulations, and, and in this, in this case, the, the opponents have presented evidence as to why this should be denied, based on the golden factors. And based on that, we can legally deny the applicant, the, the, the approval of this zoning request. We can deny that, based on these golden factors.
Commissioner, I think it's a little bit more nuanced than that. I think it's a presumption that a property owner can, can just utilize their property if there is, if it is zoned, as the chairman was stated, 1985, Sedgwick County adopted countywide zoning. And instead, the golden case that's been referenced and the factors there are multi-factor analysis in terms of whether a use is reasonable or not for the surrounding properties and all the other factors that are considered. One thing I will say is that there is some case law in Kansas that says if you're construing a zoning code, and there's a question of interpretation, that's usually to be construed in favor of the property owner being able to utilize the property, which I think is somewhat in line with what you're saying, but is different than the overall quasi-judicial setting that you are all in today, and the planning commission is in on zoning cases, where it's really kind of an even question. There's not a presumption necessarily one way or another. You're supposed to look at the, the factors and see if a use is reasonable and, and weigh those factors. So I, I think that, I hope that helps answer your question, but it's not quite as simple as the burden's just on the neighbors to prove that the use isn't reasonable. It's more of a even-handed approach to all the parties.
Good. Thank you, Justin. Okay, Commissioners. Commissioner Meitzner, this is in your district. Open for comment or a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I assume you can still hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, there's been a lot, a lot gone on, on this, and I don't want to rehash everything. There's a lot of reasons to deny, and, and there's consideration to try to provide some kind of a venue for this operation to, to exist peacefully and commercially in a residential, completely surrounded residential. But I don't see why, I, I'm not in favor of approving that. And so I'm going to make a motion, officially, I'll make a motion to, to deny the zone change, which follows the MAPC recommendation.
A second. Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. The motion is approved to deny his own change. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-
Hey, bud. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, please continue.
Item F, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103, and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
Okay. With this is Lindsey Porizel.
Yes. Okay. So, good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Porizel, your CFO. I think this item is going to be significantly shorter than your last, so that's my Halloween gift to you this week. So this first item, as the clerk shared out, is related to bridge projects that have already been approved as a part of the approved CIP. We have two bridges that are together total $1.15 million that were identified through the CIP process as dollars that would be funded with bond proceeds. So this is the project authorization. You all probably remember that this is the first step in a process so that we secure our right to reimburse ourselves with debt proceeds after the project is finished. So this is pretty typical for what we do. So Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, is here. He's going to walk you through the resolution that you're authorizing today. Once you approve that, or if you approve that, then I would recommend that you vote to authorize the resolution and the publication, and everything is outlined in your agenda item.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lindsey. Garth, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. As Lindsey mentioned, this first resolution relates to the bridge projects, those two bridges, B 498 and B 509. A portion of the costs of those projects are to be financed with the bonds, with the balance of the cost to come from available sales tax proceeds. The resolution before you for these bridge projects authorized the bonds to finance those portion of the costs, if adopted. When these bonds are actually included in the county's bond issuance sold, one of the nice things about these bridge projects and the bonds for them is that these bonds will actually be exempt from the county's debt limit as well. And so with that being said, if there are any questions on this resolution for the two bridge projects, I'll pause now, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Garth. Commission, any questions? We're on item F. These are two bridge projects. Any questions here? Okay, seeing none, I will move to adopt the resolution as presented in staff material.
Second.
Does that work, Garth?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, very good. Next item, please.
I, sorry, I had myself on mute. Sorry about that. Aye.
Got it.
Thank you.
Item G, a resolution declaring it necessary to construct improvements to existing roads in Sedgwick County, Kansas, under the authority of KSA 685103, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof, and providing for a publication of the resolution as required by law.
Well, she didn't go far. Lindsey Porizel.
I sure didn't. Yes, for the record, Lindsey Porizel, your CFO. So this item looks a lot like the last item you just approved, except that for, instead of for bridges, this one is for one road, of which, again, it was included in an approved capital improvement plan. At that time, we estimated that we would need $3 million of bond proceeds to fund this project out of a total of $4.6 million. So again, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, is here to talk through the resolution. And again, if you approve that, if you don't have questions, I recommend that you authorize the resolution in a similar fashion to what you just did.
Okay, very good. Garth?
Yes, thank you again, Commission. This resolution, very similar to the last one, as Lindsey mentioned, this relates to roads, and therefore, that's why the resolution itself is a little bit different. For these road projects, after adoption of the resolution, it actually requires a publication once a week for two consecutive weeks in the official county newspaper. And then that second publication will start a 90-day protest period. Once the protest period is expired, the county will have the ability to issue the bonds to finance a portion of the cost of this road project. With that being said, I'll pause for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Garth. Any questions or comments from the bench? I'll just, Lindsey had mentioned it. It's $4.6 million is the total project cost. $3 million is the bond, and then we use county sales tax revenues as pursuant to statute of $1.6 million in the remaining piece. So $3 million would be the bond portion of this. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to adopt the resolution as detailed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Garth, Lindsey, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Sedgwick County Zoo.
And they have waited so patiently, which we appreciate so much. With this is Mr. Tim Kaufman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. As you know, there are many exciting things going on at Sedgwick County Zoo right now at this time of year. Another amazing version of Wild Lights opened last week, offering guests a completely different perspective on the, and to talk about some other news from the zoo, I'd like to introduce Mandy Wilbert, the Vice Chair of the Zoological Society Board, with a message for you and the community. After our discussion, I would recommend that you receive and file this report. Mandy?
Hello, Mandy, welcome.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. I know there's still a few of us left here. And we're really excited to be sharing some news with you from your partners at the zoo. As Tim mentioned, I'm Mandy Wilbert, Senior Manager at Cox Communications. I'm actually today representing the Zoological Society as the Vice Chairman. The partnership we have with the county is one that we are so appreciative of, that we are just really so fortunate to have and take seriously. So we thank you for that partnership and the outstanding relationship we've had for so long. By working together, we've been able to create a treasured cultural attraction that this community truly values and appreciates. Currently, we are home to nearly 3,000 animals of more than 400 different species, and the Sedgwick County Zoo has been recognized with national and international awards for its supportive field conservation programs and successful breeding of rare and endangered species. And speaking of breeding, you're all aware of the exciting news ahead for the zoo with the pending births of five elephants in 2025. I wanted to just take a moment to talk about this mission, critical achievement, and introduce our President and Chief Executive Officer, Scott Nolan.
There he is. Scott, welcome. We're glad to hear this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mandy, County Commissioners, everybody here from the Zoological Society. It's truly an honor to be here today to share this update with you on the pending arrival of our elephant calves next year. I can't underscore the significance of these pregnancies enough. This is a crucial step in achieving the mission of establishing a successful breeding program to contribute to the sustainability of African elephant population in the U.S. When we learned in 2023 that we had confirmed pregnancies, we shared that news with the community, and the community was definitely overjoyed. This did create a need for us to expand the current elephant Boma as we anticipate the arrival of these calves in 2025. In order to accommodate the growth of our elephant herd, the Zoological Society has studied and discussed this need and designed a solution that doesn't just address our current-
and designed a solution that doesn't just address our current issue, but provides us plenty of room to grow and be more successful through our breeding activities in the future. That's why today, we are very excited to launch our latest capital campaign with a goal of raising ten million dollars for the zoo's new family B O M A facility. This will help us build for the future and our growing herd. Working collaboratively with our valued partners, we plan to double the indoor space available to our elephants, providing them with ample room to roam, play, and socialize. Here on the screen, you can see a rendering of the expansion. The building on the left is our original Sedgwick County B O M A, and the space to the right of it would be an expansion that we build onto that. In addition to the increased space, we are incorporating several enhancements to enrich the elephants' lives and well-being. New enrichment devices, training walls, and very unique calf creeps will allow our guests to witness firsthand the important work that our zookeepers do to form the incredible bonds that they have with these majestic animals. The family B O M A is designed with one large herd space that would accommodate all of our females within our current herd and including their upcoming expected offspring. And that would in a sense free up the original B O M A for more flexibility and our bulls. This design will allow for ample space for growth in the future and give us plenty of flexibility for our herd management. In this next model, this would just show a scenario in that we would have enough room with this expansion that all five of our breeding females could not just have one offspring, but could have, in fact, two as they grow older, as well as room for our matriarchal, I'm sorry, our matriarch, Stephanie. This is a very important thing for elephant development, is for the families to witness these other births. It helps create really strong social bonds. It helps the females teach the new elephants how to take care of the new babies. It's just very, very important for the socialized herd structure that we want to achieve here. The next slide here shows what would happen if, as these calves grow, which we know they will, and the next generation comes, we will be able to splinter off some of our family group to other zoos here in the U.S. and other A Z A facilities. And this would just give us an additional room to keep growing our breeding program. Today marks the launch of this capital campaign, and before the year is out, we are going to prepare the site for this new construction. Twenty-twenty-five will be very busy with the elephants, all due to give birth from the months of March through September. We will break ground on the new barn, hopefully next fall, once all the new babies have arrived, and then celebrate the grand opening of this new family B O M A in the fall of twenty-twenty-six. I'd like to wrap up here by sharing with you a very exciting visual. This is our first look at Zubiri's calf via our ultrasound. This was taken just last week. You can imagine how difficult it is with the thick skin of an elephant to get ultrasound images. What you are seeing here is the spine of Zubiri's calf, and in addition to seeing the spine structure, we actually saw really good movement that is indicative of a healthy pregnancy. So, we were very excited to be able to share this with you today as well. The birth of these elephants will be crucial for the sustainability of the African elephant population within A Z A. We remain steadfast in our commitment to securing the future of elephants for our generations to come. You may have heard me say this in a video previously. I hope for our zoo that your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, will have the opportunity to experience the wonder of elephants and learn about their vital role in our natural world. As you know, this is an ambitious project, and it will require a lot of hard work and the energy and support of our community friends, our corporate partners, and our supporting foundations. Every donation, we will make a significant difference in providing these amazing animals with the home they deserve. Commission, your past leadership has helped lay the foundation for us to achieve the sustainability goals that S C C has set out for ourselves. Together, we can create a lasting legacy for elephants and inspire future generations to appreciate and protect these incredible creatures. Thank you for your partnership once again, as we lead the way in this part of the industry. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this exciting project.
Okay, very good, Scott. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for those Zoological Society that are here and those staff that are here today. It is exciting times at Sedgwick County Zoo. Some questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Full disclosure, I've been a member of the zoo board for eight years now, and it's my favorite board that I've ever served on, honestly, as they get things done. This is a great public-private partnership. It's been over fifty years in place, and our zoo has changed immensely over those fifty years, thanks to the leadership of the Zoological Society and the Sedgwick County Commission. I'm very proud of where we're at today and what we're looking at in the future. As a board member, I've been able to gain a little bit additional information about elephants in the United States. And correct me if I'm wrong, okay? But over the history of elephants in the United States, most of them were brought to the United States by circuses. And there really weren't any big restrictions on bringing elephants into the United States, but those elephants have aged and many have died. And so, how do we let, as Scott mentioned, how do we let our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and I now have two great-grandchildren, how are we going to allow them to see elephants? Because I don't see that we'll ever import another elephant into the United States. So, where does that leave us? It leaves us to the point where we have to have a breeding program in the United States in order to be able to sustain the herd so that our future generations can find and see these majestic animals. So, how do we get this breeding program going? And correct me if I'm wrong again, but I understand out of all the zoos in the United States, and there are hundreds of zoos, there's only five, am I correct, five, that can actually create a breeding program?
There's a few more than that, but you're right, the number is small compared to the two-hundred-and-seventy-plus A Z A zoos that are in the U.S.
So, with this small number of zoos, we're very privileged to have one of those, and we're soon going to see five new baby elephants as a result of that. But with those five new baby elephants, we have to actually first baby-proof the zoo, and second, we have to be able to expand it in order to be able to meet the mission of having a breeding program here in the United States. So, that's why that this announcement today that we're going into a capital campaign is so critical, because this is going to happen. We're looking at babies showing up here early next year. Let me talk a little bit about the zoo as a whole, because we've had a lot of discussions here recently on what's core functions and what's economic development and what's nice to have and so forth. So, Sedgwick County Zoo, I know a few years ago, we did a study, I think W S U did it, on the economic impact of the zoo on Sedgwick County, and I don't recall the exact number, but it seems like it was seventy, eighty million dollars.
It was about sixty-one million.
Sixty-one, okay. So, sixty-one million dollars. We put in about nine to ten million dollars in there. So, we always look at our return on investment. That's one of the main things that we look at. And so, if we get a one-to-one return on our investment, we're pretty happy. Well, what he just told me is that we got about a six-to-one return on our investment. That's pretty good. That's economic development. In addition, when we're looking at things like the zoo exploration place, the InTrust Bank Arena, all these things that Sedgwick County supports, the other thing that we worry about is what is the impact on attracting the workforce that we need for tomorrow? We have to have quality of life. That is imperative, that we have quality of life, or we're not going to attract the workforce that we need, and we're expanding every day trying to grow. So, without something like this, we're going to have a much more difficult time to attract the workforce of the future. So, I have a little bit of a problem sometimes saying that, hey, this is something that's just entertainment. This is the future of Sedgwick County, and we have to remember that. Remind me again how many visitors we had last year?
Last year, we had just over six-thirty, yeah, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Six-hundred-and-thirty thousand visitors. Number-one tourist attraction in the entire state of Kansas. Again, a lot of those visitors came from outside of the Sedgwick County. And as such, they brought in even more revenue. That's how we have this sixty-one million dollars' worth of economic impact. I really appreciate the Zoological Society, because as I said at the beginning, serving on that board, they get things done. I've served on a lot of boards that we sit around and talk, and then at the end of the day, we go away and nothing happens. But this board, things happen. And right now, we're looking at a future with elephants that is very bright. So, I appreciate you bringing this to us today. I am so excited that this is going to happen. I hope when you have groundbreaking, you'll invite me back, because I won't be on the commission. But at that point in time, I still am going to be a big supporter of Sedgwick County Zoo. Scott, thank you very much for coming and talking to us about this exciting opportunity.
Good. Thank you, Commissioners. Scott, remind me again, what is the gestation period for an elephant?
Twenty-three months. So, it's a long haul. It is definitely a marathon, not a sprint.
Yeah, very good, yes. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask a couple quick questions. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation. Thank you for the other members of the zoo being here as well. Thank you for being here today. So, it says here that births will start in March of twenty-five. So, this has been going on quite a while, apparently. But the announcement wasn't too long ago. Do we not, do we not, I'm just, I guess I was surprised to find out at one time there was five pregnancies. I guess we did not publicly know about the earlier ones until...
Yeah, so, we have been trying to get our females pregnant for many years. For part of that story, Commissioner Howell, one of the bulls that we initially brought in, his name was Johnny. Socially, Johnny was an amazing animal. Reproductively, not as an amazing animal, to put it nicely. But we, in a sense, we kind of lost some time with these females. Just like humans, elephants have a reproductive window that we're trying to capitalize on. So, when we established that that bull was probably not going to meet our needs, that is when we worked with the S S P, we worked with the other zoos, and moved a new bull in, which is a very natural thing in elephant life, bulls move in and out of areas. And so, when we got Callie in from the Omaha's Henry Dorley Zoo, we were kind of in a rush to see how many of our females we could get him to breed with. There was no assurance that he was going to impregnate all five, and then even if they did get pregnant, there's no guarantee that all five will be successful births. So, we're kind of playing the odds there that, you know, we're just hedging our bets that we have some success. If we have all five babies, we are going to be absolutely elated. There is no doubt about it. We have been planning, you know, how we were going to do these births, and we have enough space for this first winter. We don't have any worries about that. But it would be the elephant's second winter, so the second fall-winter months here in Wichita, where space would be kind of a crunch for us. So, while we did make the announcements of the pregnancies, you know, early this past spring, we've been working on how we would fit all five of these individuals into our herd and how best we could do that. So, I don't have to tell you, it takes a lot of planning to build these buildings and really take all the factors into consideration. So, we've done all the concepts. We've got a price that we're comfortable with, that we believe we can pull the project off for. So, that's why we're bringing this out today, because we've got, we do have that ticking clock. It's really Mother Nature we're fighting against here, not so much Father Time. So, that's one of the reasons we're bringing this to you today.
So, you still have Titan, though, don't you? He's a teenage male.
Yes, we do have Titan currently. We have a recommendation to send Titan to another facility. Titan is going to go off to start his own herd with another bull that is already established at the other facility. We haven't made any official announcements yet, so we are hoping to move Titan out sometime this fall, early spring. And that was actually a collaborative effort between us and the S S P to make sure that we have enough space for this coming winter as we are successful with our deliveries.
So, at the moment, we have six females, count Stephanie, and three males.
Two males.
Two males at the moment?
Yes.
Is Johnny still here?
No, Johnny has moved to Toledo.
Okay, I didn't know that. So, we have eight, eight total right now, and five will be here before you know it. It looks like in twenty-twenty-five, we'll have thirteen, I guess, we'll have thirteen here. And the exhibit we have now is designed for how many maximum?
So, outdoor exhibit, we could definitely have even more elephants as far as if you look at it in a term of square footage that we have. We are not concerned with the outdoor exhibit at all. Our limiting factor is really that indoor winter holding. So, the current barn, when we designed it, was designed for six elephants originally that then would hopefully breed and have enough space for those offspring. So, we do have enough space for this first winter, even following A Z A standards. We are comfortable with being able to house them this winter. It's just as those individuals grow, we know we're going to need a little more room.
You mentioned a minute ago, eventually, you're going to do, you said you were splitting off parts of the herd to other zoos or whatever. Will that be when you send out a mother with a baby, or how does that, or you send off the babies on their own, or how does that actually work?
Yeah, typically, what we do, and we try to mimic what happens in nature as much as we can, herds are fluid in the range countries. They are matriarchal kind of organizations. It's a bunch of moms, grandmas, aunties that kind of run the show, but eventually, mom, sister, maybe a couple calves splint off, and they go to another herd. So, in a sense, we're really mimicking those natural behaviors. So, to your point, Jim, when the animals are old enough, we can splinter off maybe two of our females. It could just be one with her offspring. It could be two of our breeding females with both of their offspring. We could splinter them off to another zoo to create another breeding facility, which is really one of the goals that we had set out for ourselves when we did the import all those years ago.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking backwards, back to about twenty-thirteen or twenty-fourteen, when the first exhibit was envisioned, if you will. Are we on track with what we had planned a long time ago, or is this a kind of a change of direction?
No, we're on track with the original goals for that. I would say we're behind in terms of where we wish we had been with elephant production. As you all know, the animals that came in with the import for Iswatini, five of them, five of the females that went to Omaha have all already had calves. Two others that were at the other partner zoo have had calves since they came to the U.S. So, our females are kind of lagging behind, but that's really due to Johnny and just how our breeding program had progressed up to this point.
So, today is the kickoff of the capital campaign. Is there a website where people can donate?
There is. So, if you go to S C Z dot org, and there will be a button, a donate button, it may be S C Z dot elephants. Thank you, there you go. But yes, there is way to, for the general public, to participate in this campaign.
I assume you're looking for some corporate sponsorships as well. They need to just talk to you guys directly for that. Is that possible?
Absolutely. We are starting to kick over every stone that we know of. So, we have lots of work to do with our corporate sponsors, our corporate partners. So we have lots of work to do with our corporate sponsors, our corporate partners, private individuals. We're going to need everyone's help for this heavy lift.
So it looks like you need about ten million dollars roughly between now and next fall, for about, so about a year from now. You need to raise ten million dollars in one year.
That's correct.
That's the goal. You're not asking us anything today?
No, we're just here to make an announcement for you all.
Very good, well, that's great. Glad to have this publicly presented. I just want to make one comment, and I'll be, I'm glad to hear the news, and I'm excited for the zoo, and I think it's going to be wonderful going forward. With respect to the sales tax versus property tax, we have plenty of sales tax to cover our obligations at the, our commitments to the zoo. Again, so there's been some discussion about how we fund things. I like to connect sales tax dollars to how they're being used in the community, and we know the Sedgwick County Zoo is owned by the Sedgwick County government. The buildings are, belong to the county government. And the maintenance of those buildings and the employees that work there, about a hundred and twelve employees last count, I remember that, maybe it's a little bit more than that, but it's around a hundred and twelve employees, our Sedgwick County employees, that we pay their salaries. And so the discussion I've been promoting is to pay those salaries and take care of the, take care of our infrastructure at the zoo, using sales tax dollars as a first, as a fund-first obligation to the sales tax revenues that are for, essentially available for, right now, they're in the general fund. I'd like to earmark that for basically, sales tax dollars to take care of a culture and arts obligations across the county. They can still be used for core functions, but what I'm trying to prevent is property tax dollars from funding things that are considered maybe discretionary. I would argue that we don't have to do this. This is a great plan, but to that extent, property tax dollars are not, are best used not for this type of investment. But sales tax dollars would be very appropriate. So with that in mind, there's plenty of sales tax dollars to provide funding for these types of things in our community. So I think the discussion is still, is still necessary. So I heard the previous comments, the sixty-one million dollars, the zoo's not going to go anywhere. It's going to continue to thrive, and I'm sure that we're, will continue supporting the zoo to, so that it can thrive. And how that, how the dollars are generated by the county and how those, you know, where those dollars come from is really not the major discussion here today. But thank you again for the presentation. I appreciate knowing more about this.
Awesome, thank you, Jim.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you for being here. I don't have a whole lot to say, because it's already been said, but I just appreciate you bringing this, and thank you for sharing that sonogram. I never thought I would see an elephant sonogram, so it was really cool to see that. So I appreciate you bringing that today.
You're welcome. They are incredibly challenging to get, as you can imagine. And with the other fact that, you know, the females that we have haven't been in a zoo their whole lives, they're not really as comfortable as Stephanie is to some of our invasive procedures. So the fact that we can take these images for you is actually pretty impressive for our staff, so.
Well, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Scott, thank you. I think one of the greatest things I've heard since I've been on the commission, and I mean this sincerely, it's not Mother Nature we're dealing with here, it's Father Time. That was epic, bud. Madam Clerk, I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis?
Hi.
Commissioner Howell?
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Chairman Beatty?
Hi. Thanks again, Scott. Thank you, zoo, everybody for being here today. Commissioner Meitzner, I think, needs to get to a meeting. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, I need to sign off here, but if need be, please contact me, and I'll log back in real quick. Thanks for the meeting this morning, everybody. Apologize, I have to leave.
Okay. We wanted to note that for the meeting minutes, Commissioner Meitzner had to sign off. We still obviously have a quorum, so we will move ourselves forward. Commissioner Dennis can run a restroom real break, real quick, so we're just going to keep going and move forward. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Appraiser's Office Update.
Our county appraiser and the deputy county appraiser are here. Mark Ronnie, welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. Good morning. Mark Clark, County Appraiser. Today, I will be providing an update on the Appraiser's Office, and I have some good news right off the bat. The Appraiser's Office is in substantial compliance for 2024 with an overall score of ninety-point-eight. That's an A. Somebody's telling me to turn the slide. Thank you. There are two sections to substantial compliance. One is the 2023 ratio study, and basically, what is done there, you're taking the 2023 sales and comparing them to 2023 values. The second part is the 2024 statutory procedural compliance, which we did well on. And the ratio study, there were some challenges, but also, we did very well on some aspects. The 2024 ratio study, basically, the median ratio, my office was in compliance with a score of ninety-one percent. We did not need the confidence interval, and if you see the numbers that are in parentheses by that ninety-one, that is, those are the confidence intervals. We did not need that. We were well in compliance. The median ratio, the IWO standard, is ninety to one-ten. The COD, which is the coefficient of dispersion, was in compliance, and we did not need the assistance of the confidence interval there either. That was a score of nine-point-six, and the COD is your measure of uniformity. On commercial, the median ratio score was eighty-point-four, and also, which is out, and the confidence interval also didn't help any. However, the commercial COD was in with the assistance, without the assistance, excuse me, of the confidence interval at nineteen-point-one. So there's a little bit of work to do as far as some minor adjustments that we're going to make, and we should be fine. And I believe that things are looking pretty good. Going at the, looking at the sales ratio definitions, basically, median is the middle number of an arrayed, of assorted array of ratios. Looking at your COD, that is your coefficient of dispersion. The standard there for my IWO is five to twenty. Basically, you have an assorted array horizontally, and you are looking to make sure that the sales ratios for those properties are equitable. Then you are looking at the price-related differential, which is, once again, a sorted array vertically, and you are trying to make sure that when you're valuing properties, you are not overvaluing low-priced properties in relation to high-priced properties. So on the top, you will have the high-priced properties. On the bottom, you've got the low-priced properties. And if you are overvaluing the low-priced properties in relation to the high-priced properties, you are being regressive. And the IWO standard there is ninety-eight to one-oh-three. If you're above one, you're beginning to be regressive. Looking at that median ratio, once again, we were in compliance without the confidence interval, which is great news. Looking at the commercial median history there, we've always had challenges there, but as I said, there will be some minor adjustments there, and I believe that we will be fine. The Appraiser's Office does do internal ratio studies as recommended by our IWO audit, and this is our latest internal ratio study, basically residential and commercial. The number shown contain both validated and unvalidated sales, which shows that we do have some work to do. And we believe that this is a true representation of Sedgwick County, and once sales begin to be validated, you will see those numbers improve substantially. Looking at this chart, this chart is very interesting. Appraiser's Office Staffing Status: Years of Experience Lost. Since January first, 2020 through October fourth, 2024, the Appraiser's Office has lost three-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-two-four years of experience, from forty-six staff members through separations or retirements. With known retirements to come by the end of 2024, the Appraiser's Office has lost an estimated four-hundred-and-six-point-eight-four years of experience. The average length of service for the separated employees is three-point-six years, and the average length of service for the retired employees is twenty-six-point-five-two years. The main reasons for this experience lost is, of course, we have retirements, there are still compensation issues, and we have issues concerning production, error rates, et cetera. We have lots of work to do. We have production databases. Basically, we can track just about everything everyone does, and the state has a very tough error ratio of one percent. And that is something that causes some people some problems, and unfortunately, there has to be some separation sometimes. We have a very strong training program in the office, and so it is, it is, some people do find the work challenging. Also, another issue is, and you've heard this word before, multi-parcel. The state wants the multi-parcel situation cleaned up, and they are now beating the drum constantly. And so they are basically telling me and my staff that the outside applications that you're using to help value commercial properties, you're going to sunset those, and you're going to begin your work in Orion. We do use Orion on the commercial side, but we're going to do a lot more of it. Looking at the Appraiser's Office Staffing Status, three years. If you look at that, basically, your blue-gray are new and promoted, your red is vacant, and your white are existing. The new and promoted, basically, is fifty-eight-point-five-seven percent. Your vacant, that is eight positions, and it is at eleven-point-four-three percent. A sixer in res, one is in personal property, and another is in our information and assistance. And it is a challenge to get staff. We were constantly interviewing, and some of them work out, and some of them don't. We keep going, and existing, we're at thirty percent. Employees that we have new or promoted positions have been in those positions for less than three years. And so they are constantly learning. We're training them, they're getting classes, they're working hard, they're learning a lot. So we're doing all right, but it is a challenge. Status, sales status, all properties, and this year is going to be for res, commercial, residential, commercial, and ag. The darker blue line is the total number of sales during a year, and the lighter blue bar is for the end of September of each year. Higher interest rates impacted sales activity. Sales activity at the end of September 2024, when compared to the end of 2023, was relatively flat. The number of sales is below the five-year pre-pandemic line, 2015 to 2019, due to relatively high interest rates. Building permits, building permits, this chart does not include roofs, siding, or towers, because they really don't contribute to value. Building permit counts as of the end of September 2024. They're slightly down due to relatively high interest rates and increased relatively high construction materials and services. High cost of construction materials and services. Dwelling, dwelling, new, excuse me, new dwelling permit counts, and this will include single-family residents, duplexes, triplexes, and quadraplexes. Quadraplexes. Data for this chart is as of the end of September. For all years shown on the chart, the dark line, once again, is the total number in a year, and the light blue, as of the end of September. New dwellings were relatively stable, very similar to last year, remain above the five-year pandemic line, which is 2015 to 2019. Now, this is an interesting chart here, interest rates since 1971. And this information comes from Freddie Mac. It is on a yearly frequency. The date range is 1971 to 2024. When taking the average of all interest rates, the date range, excuse me, the date range is 1971 to 2024, and the, the interest rate average is eight percent. If you take an average of the date range, 2000 to 2020, it's five percent. So that red line is eight, the green line is five, and the yellow line, if you take the average of the date range, 2020 to 2022, which is basically your pandemic years, the interest rate is four percent. Interest rates, and the takeaway here is, interest rates have been relatively low for quite a long time. Now, if you look at the next chart, this is a zoom in, interest rates from 2020. And the data, once again, comes from Freddie Mac. It's based on a monthly frequency, and the zoom is from the date range, January first, 2020, through October first, 2024. It gives a perspective on recency. What people remember most is what they are experiencing now. And so when you, it also is interesting, it is also an, it is an interesting visual on the interest rate environment. In recent years, people are saying interest rates are high. And last year, Commissioner Dennis and I were talking, and we remember the early part of the chart back in 1971 and '82, it looks, gee, you're close to nineteen percent. So people today, they are thinking in more recent terms. Yes, higher interest rates are impacting things, that is true. But when you start to look at things, I hope I didn't reveal my age there. Relatively speaking, interest rates are relatively low. Now, when you look at interest rates and sales counts, the red bars indicate the number of sales on the right-hand side, and the interest rates are on the left-hand side. Date range is 2015 to 2024. It's a quarterly frequency. Interest rates are not the only drivers of residential sales or sales period. And that includes commercial, it includes ag as well. Also, changing demographics, your age, your income, your location preferences, economic conditions, both locally and nationally, government policies, legislation, and subsidies, they all impact real estate sales. Sedgwick County Median Sale Price. As of the end of September 2024, the median sales price for new and existing single-family homes was two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars, or a one-point-eight-percent increase year-over-year since last September. Prices remain high. Affordability of housing is still a big issue. I know that our CFO kindly sent us an article from Business Journal, it said, you know, that we are one of the more affordable places in the country, which I am grateful to hear. However, that is a statistical measure across the nation, and we do know that here in Sedgwick County, and we hear it a lot, we hear it from lending institutions, we hear it from people who want to buy homes, et cetera, that affordability is an issue. And the balance between... And the balance between supply and demand continues to push prices higher. Cedric County median days on the market. At the end of September 2024, the median days on the market was 14 days and appears to be tracking the 2019 line at this time. And 2019 is that dotted line. So that's 2019. The dark line that is arching up to meet that, that is the 2024 line. Transactions are down, are, are flat to relative, transactions are flat to slightly down. Inventory is rising, but the market remains relatively strong. Cedric County's month supply of inventory. This chart shows the month's supply of inventory is increasing. Relatively high interest rates and high home prices have caused the increase. The month's supply of inventory is in fact increasing. Note, the red line at four months is a, of inventory is the threshold for a normal residential real estate market. And that red line at the top is your four months. And for this year, we are that purple line. It's the second line, that's where we're at. We are not in a normal residential market. But the rising inventory does make it look like we are moving in that direction. But only time will tell. What impacts will the Fed's action to lower rates have? We'll find out soon if we get hot again. And at the same time, we'll have to see what happens in the local and national economy.
Hey, Mark, what question, what's the x-axis represent there?
That is your month. Those are the months.
Sorry, other axis.
Excuse me.
Y-axis, yeah, y-axis, sorry.
I'm sorry, those are months.
So 4.0 represents what? Months of supply of inventory?
You're talking about the red line.
Correct.
That is, that's a threshold for a normal market.
Okay, that's helpful. That's the normal threshold?
Yes.
Okay.
It's four to six, that's a normal market. And we are far from it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch you.
No, you're good, I missed it.
That's fine. Cedric County median percent asking price. Despite relatively high interest rates, the residential real estate market remains resilient, and prices are still high. In most cases, sellers are getting full asking prices. Cedric County median days on the market by asking price. The current median days on the market is 10 days. Many transactions are below the 10-day median red line. And that red line that you see there, that is the 10-day median line. Price ranges from 150,000 to 300,000 are selling the fastest. At this point in time last year, the median days on the market was five days. Homes are still selling, but not as fast as they did last year. Cedric County's month supply by asking price. The story of this chart is that home, is that the homes in the upper end of the price range, that's 400,000 and higher, have reached the four-month normal market line. A normal residential market is between four and six months. Now, that's kind of interesting that at the upper end of your price range, they have found a normal market. They've reached that line. This here is another interesting chart, one that always sort of makes people scratch their head and think what's going on. For the past several years, residential, the residential portion of the assessed value has increased every year. The commercial portion of the assessed value has declined every year. But in 2024, residential actually decreased from 66.45% to 66.26%. And commercial increased from 30.59% to 30.85%. And when you say, Mark, that's not a whole lot. It's not, but it is interesting to see that. And at the same time, residential has approximately 183,500 parcels with an assessment ratio of 11.5%. And commercial has approximately 14.600, 14,600 with an assessment ratio of 25%. So it'll be interesting to see in the next several years what happens here. And I, I think it'd be interesting to see what happens in 2025. On October 4th, 2004, Cedric County closed its tax rule. There are three bars on this, and we're talking about personal property total accounts. There are three bars for each year. The first is personal property value notice. On that date, we have values on that date. And then the second, we have June 1 certification. We have values there. And then for three, the third bar, we have the tax rule. Now, when I say, yeah, we're measuring accounts, my point here is that when we close that tax rule, we send it to the clerk, and they are working diligently to soon set our levies. But when you look at the total accounts, and we know that the legislature wants personal property to go away, it is still being driven in Cedric County by growth in the individual personal property and watercraft. Also, I think it's interesting to note that, yes, the legislature wants personal property to go away, but let's not forget that even though business has been declining, CIME, it is still one of the bedrocks of the fire district valuation, and it is one of the bedrocks of the Derby School valuation and the Derby Rec valuation. Personal property accounts by type. This chart shows that watercraft and individual personal property accounts continue to increase while business, CIME, continues to decline. Other categories of personal property are declining or relatively flat. Assessed valuation breakdown. My office is responsible between 95% and 96% of Cedric County's total assessed valuation. Real property continues to increase, while our personal property continues to decrease, and the state assessed portion increases, but at a lower rate than the real property. Appraisers Office Appeals. And this is only for equalization appeals. Equalization appeals are your springtime appeals. When you turn over your value notice, send them back to the Appraisers Office, and we will set you up with an appeal meeting. For 2024, there, there were 323 fewer appeals filed than in 2023. The, for 2024, 4,362 appeals were filed. And those were all EQ with my office. And in 2023, there were 4,685. Now, when you look at that, you say, well, did everybody get a hearing? Well, everybody that filed was not heard. There was 2.7% that were not heard. And you say, why? Well, some of them, if you had an impersonating appeal meeting, were no-shows, and they simply didn't come. Or if you had a phone hearing, you were called three times and you never answered. Also, the applicant may have failed to reschedule your, their appeal meeting with our office, which you can do. And the applicant may have voluntarily canceled their appeal, which they do do. And it is, it is quite interesting. Once we started putting, putting more and more information out on the website and people doing their homework, you had that number increase where people would just call and say, I don't think it's worth my time. I, I think that I'm not going to do that. Appraisers Office Appeals Smart File. This is a piece of software, and it has helped with our appeals. It was purchased in 2003, excuse me, and implemented in 2024. Staff likes it a lot, it does. It has helped to streamline the scheduling process. So rather than causing issues with the email system, people would just email their documentation in, and it would bog down the system. We have used the software. It is safe and secure. People can file for an appeal, and they can provide their documentation via the Smart File system. Appraisers Office All Sales Average Days. Now, this here covers all sales, res, commercial, and ag. Sales certification is a very important part of the appraisal process. There are still sales from past years that have not been reviewed. The situation continues to improve due a new, due to a new methodology that we implemented in 2020 and was approved by PVD. Nevertheless, there are slightly more than a half percent of sales from 2021 left to review, as well as 7.8% for 2022 and 28.6% for 2023. And there is a lot for 2024. However, if you look at the year 2021, that blue line that is coming down precipitously, that is evidence that our new procedure has helped. And that procedure basically states that if on the face of an SVQ, you can tell that the sale is invalid, you don't have to go to the field on that. However, if, while reviewing, while PVD is doing its review, they find that that sale is truly not invalid, it isn't, it is valid, you must immediately go to the field. So any sale that is valid, we must do physical review on it in the field. And that has helped substantially in, in reducing that. Nonetheless, the state points out that we do need to do additional work. And there are lots of days, because the regulation is 60 days from the time that an SVQ is filed. We have to either validate or invalidate. We are way beyond 60 days. And the state does wag its finger at me and says, you must do better. And so I'm just letting you know. Appraisers Office Status for 2025. Yeah, you need to see what I'm talking about. Appraisers Office Status for 2025. Run full calibration of land models. Basically, reviewing our valuation models, recalibrate all models, cost, market, and income. Basically, we're doing analysis, reviewing coefficients and data that goes into our models, review market area assignments and adjust as necessary. There, we're looking at our neighborhoods and groupings of properties. Run comparable sales reports for all residential properties. Continue working to complete income approach inside of Orion. PVD has been adding new calculation definitions and new calculation pages. We're testing those. There's lots of work to do there. And it does create a lot of stress for, for, for that commercial department. And, and we're, we're working through that. Continue working on valuing multi-parce economic units inside of Orion. Personal property statutory change. And that deals with the penalty. So the new legislation reduces the late filing penalty from 5% to 2% per month, with a maximum penalty for late filing reduced from 25% to 10%. Also, the penalty for nonfilers or failure to file is reduced from 50% to 25%. Personal property renditions mailing statutory change. Basically there, if you have filed in the past, you're not going to get a rendition from us this year. We are not going to do a mass mailing of renditions. However, we will mail to those people that are nonfilers and other ones that we see that, that may need to be mailed. That's going to be approximately 18,000 rather than some 36,500. That is a substantial change. Nonetheless, that is something that we want to communicate with our, to our property owners. And we'll be working with the Strategic Communications Group to get the news out to that. May, may want to do some news stations, may want to do a postcard. And if with your permission, we probably want to put something on your newsletter. I think that would be helpful. And then we're making Appraiser Updates information to the website. We have found that making information available to people on the website pays dividends. And we are going to enhance what we have there, and we're also going to be adding to it. So I want to end up, and I want to thank my staff for their hard work and their professionalism. I want to thank the commissioners for their support and allowing us to present this morning. And I'd like to thank the manager and his staff for their support and assistance. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Mark, thank you for the presentation. You also came and updated and briefed commissioners in one-on-one meetings as well. So we appreciate, Mark, Ronnie, we appreciate the efforts. Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Real quickly, we're out of compliance with the ratio right now. Is there any penalty? Does PVD tell us that they are going to do, make, do something to us as a result of that? Or, or what's the next steps that we have to go through?
Those next steps are my next steps. And basically, they're just saying, you need to make some adjustments. And that's what I'm going to do.
So there's no penalty from PVD for being out?
If we would have been out on the COD, they would have been down here. Because if you're out on both, they get perturbed. And so that would have been the second time. This time, we improved, we got the COD in, and so that won't happen. But I do have to make adjustments so that we can get the level of appraisal up some.
Okay. Well, like commercial, of course, they're, they're assessed at a much higher rate than residential and so forth. With that being so low, why, we're actually missing out on a lot of property tax money from commercial because we're undervalued?
True, we are.
As we are trying to struggle with our budget to make sure that we can meet what our requirements are, why, getting that commercial especially back into a line is going to be beneficial to us in the future?
Agree.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hop.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the report. I always look forward to this report. People say it's, it's about appraisals, and it's not something we'd like to think about too much, but it is really important to our job. So I appreciate seeing some data. And I want to say, I think this is the first time we've been, Cedric County has been in compliance. So again, you should, 2023, you're in compliance for that residential sales ratio study, which again, I think that's the first time since I've been a commissioner, certainly, I think since you've been a county appraiser, that we've actually had a, one of those metrics have actually been in compliance.
Actually, we've been in compliance there, but the markets moved so, so rapidly against us that we, we slid out. And so we had to really work to get it back up.
And the way I, the way I describe that to constituents and taxpayers is essentially PVD monitors this closely. And if we've, we've fallen outside their, their bands of what's acceptable, then they essentially force you to dial in corrections into your algorithms that drives, if you will, the prices, or should they say, the appraisals that we that we produce, the algorithm is essentially adjusted by some type of correction that's made essentially because PVD forces that to happen.
That is correct.
I'm going to give you a couple of softball questions here because I really want to just stress a couple of things here. But you're a county, you're a central county appraiser. And do you get your merchant orders from Tom or from the commission here? Or?
No, I do not.
Who do you actually work for?
I work for the director of PVD.
And is that, is that here in Central County? Or where is that?
That's in Topeka.
And PVD stands for what?
That is Property Valuation Division. It is part of KEDOR, Kansas Department of Revenue.
Okay, good. And I'll just throw this out there. One of the things I, I would like to stress that again, we call you the Central County Appraiser. And, and we do essentially have a four-year contract with you that you do this for us. We renew that every four years. And again, if we wanted to, if we say, we thought you were doing a bad job, you know, we thought you weren't, you weren't doing your job well. So we have some data to back that up. We, we could, we could essentially get a different appraiser. But it should be based on some type of performance, you know, situation where, where things are not, you're not doing your job, I, I think, according to the state laws and regulations. So again, I just say this, and I'm not, I didn't ask you this question yesterday, but I'm curious, how does Central County compare to other counties across the state? Are, are all the appraisers doing as good as you? Or are we kind of better than them? Or how would you score yourself compared to the other counties?
I think that we're doing a good job. I mean, we're a big county. We have the markets that are, are really moving pretty fast. And so sometimes it's hard to keep up. And I can tell you that the director of PVD has told me I'm doing a good job. So I have no reason to believe that he, he's wrong. At the same time, commissioners, they select who they want to be their county appraiser, but the director has to approve it. And I can tell you that in relation to Johnson County, they are in an A grade. They have more resources than we do. They have a higher valuation, but their parcel count is relatively same as ours, just about.
I want to focus on residential for just a minute. So how many residential properties are, are appealed back to you guys for reconsideration? And I mean, percentage wise, or how many residential properties can you quantify that are, are actually appealed back to your office for a reconsideration? They think maybe you made a mistake. You've overvaluated the property. Can you please adjust that?
I believe it's around 3%.
3%?
I believe.
Okay. And of that 3%, that represents all residential properties. Of that 3%, I think I did a, a look yesterday. I believe we have around 200 and something thousand residential properties in Central County. Do you know the number?
It's about 183.5.
There you go. So around 3% of those are making an appeal. Of those that make an appeal, how many of them are ultimately adjusted one way or the other?
We usually in years past have been about 50/50. But this year, and especially the last two years, the market has been, as I said, difficult. And so when you, prices are rising rapidly and so forth. And so when you're looking at this, and you have to look at that ratio because you, you know you're low. We want to be conservative in our valuation. We don't want to take advantage of people. We always aim for 95% of market value and not 100%. Basically, we were somewhere around, I'd say 70% were no changed. But I, I mean, the bottom line is, it's very difficult. Now, if somebody came in and we knew their data was wrong, we changed it. But arguing the point of, well, I, I, I think I've got an argument here. We'll look at that argument. We look at their data. We want, we don't want to tell people, we're not going to look at your information. We always look at the information. But if there is a way we can make a change and, and, and we know that it's not going to make a neighborhood inequitable or something like that, we usually do it. But right now, things are so tight that it, it, it's not easy to do.
And if they don't like your decision, they can appeal it up the chain all the way essentially through, through BOTA and then through district court and all the way up to Supreme Court if they want it.
And, and all residential has to go through small claims, which is an informal part of BOTA.
Okay.
And that is held here in Central County. So people don't have to go to Topeka for the next level of appeal.
Very good. I hear from everybody, seems like the, the common narrative out there is that the, the valuations are just a way for us trying to get more money. There's this, you know, we're, we're essentially pushing the process to inflate people's valuations. Let's just talk about the fair market value, that, that, that goal of fair market value. You're trying to determine a, a sales price essentially of a resident, again, we're just talking about residential right now, of residential properties. You're trying to determine what, what would it sell for if it was sold today?
Right.
And that's what you're trying to determine, right? It's fair market value.
Correct.
If they make improvements to their home, that might change the value. Or if, if the property is dilapidated, it might change the value.
True.
Okay. So I, I took it upon myself, I'd like to ask Nicole to put up a chart. I prepared a chart. I wanted to just to show the world what I discovered. I did this last year and I did it again yesterday. Just wanted to, yes, make a, I want people to see this because, let me explain the chart here. So across the bottom axis there, that's the appraised value for every property that sold in the last 12 months. There's a range there, October 23 through September 24. And that's a 12-month period. So I asked you for sales data, and if people don't know this, but when they buy, when they transfer a property from a buyer, from a seller to a buyer, the title company fills out a sales report of some sort that gets sent to your office. So you have access to that data.
Yes.
And so I asked, I said, well, can, can you please provide me that data of every property that sold? And of this time range right here for residential properties in Central County, there's about 4,182 homes that sold. And so the appraised value of those homes is on the, the X-axis, the horizontal axis. And the sales price that was agreed to by the buyer and the seller is on the vertical axis on the left. So every one of those red dots represents a sale. And if, if the property sold for exactly what it was appraised for, there's a green dashed line in the middle. That's that bottom flat line going up. It's dashed. That would be a perfect appraisal. So if it sold for exactly at its appraised value, that would be exactly on that green dashed line. And those red dots that are below that line essentially are the ones we're really, I think we worry about the most. Because those are properties that are appraised for higher than their sale price. So again, there's an example number two there in the middle. It shows it, it appraised for $496,900, but sold for $400,000. Why did that happen? I don't know. But that one, that particular home should have, hopefully, they should have made an appeal and said, you know what, the appraisal is wrong. It's not going to sell for that. And if we would have seen that, I'm sure that probably would have been, an adjustment would have been made. But those, those dots below that green line represent properties that are appraised at higher than their actual sales, sales price. And then to the other side of that dashed line, that green line, that's all the properties that sold for higher than their appraised value. And there's 80, if you look at that bottom yellow, that box on the bottom right, 85.73% of those properties that sold, sold at or above their appraised value. I think that's important to note that.
Agreed.
So the, the orange box represents 522 properties below that green line. And the other side represents 3,660 properties above that green line. If you do the math on that, that's 85.73% of the properties sold at or above their appraised value. And then, so I show you, then in the blue box, there's a, a formula. I described that formula. I let the, the computer generate its own, its own trend line. So it was a split, all the data for, for every red dot that's on the, on the chart. And it created a formula, which I have in the middle of the chart. Then I explained that formula with a blue box. It just simply says, to go from the appraised value to the sales price on average, you would multiply it times that factor and add some money. That's your Y equals mx plus b formula. And that's, that's a really simple formula. It's a linear, linear formula. It shows you how to go from the X-axis to the Y-axis on average. But what this chart tells me then is because that blue line is to the, is up and to the left of that green line, that means you're on average undervaluing property a little bit. You're, you're close. That fact, that X, that X value for that formula, I'm sorry, the M value for that formula, if I can read it from here, it is 1.0684, which means you're 6.84% on average, on average, you're off from the sales price, you're actually undervaluing property on average 6.0, 6.84%. If anybody has any questions on this data, please let me know. But this gives me a great confidence. The problem, let me just argue this. There's been an awful lot of attention on the appraisal processes, especially for homes. And I'm not here to defend you. I'm not here to argue that there's not things we should do better. I am simply saying, this is, this is just data. And the data paints a picture. And what that picture says is the appraisal process is actually not broken in Central County.
I would agree.
Let me tell you what is broken. Not your fault. And I'm going to take a small rabbit trail. We have, and I'm not suggesting that this is all bad. I voted for some of these budgets. I voted against some of these budgets. But since 20, since, I'll just say, the last three years, we have had an increase in, I'll get my numbers straight here. We've had an increase in, there we go. The increase in, in the property values has gone up, I believe, 26.6%. That's a three-year increase. That's not you doing that. That's not, that's just market forces. Buyers and sellers have decided to increase the prices of their homes.
Right.
On average, I should say that the total increase on, by the way, this is a number is not just for homes. This is for all assessed values. This includes all kinds of other classifications.
Okay.
I'm simply using that number to make an argument about, about housing. And maybe that's not fair. But assessed value in Central County has gone up 26.6% in the last three years. We've captured 88% of that in our property tax collections. We could, we could have captured 100%. We didn't do that. Because we're conservative, we actually lowered the mill levy twice in a row. But we did capture 88% of that. We used that extra money. In fact, I'll just tell you, in the last five years, we've increased our property taxes by, by, by $50 million. And that's, we were about 100 in, if I have this right here, we were about $150 million of tax collection for the budget back in 2020. And this current year, we, in 2025, we're looking at $199 million in property tax collections, just for, not for the, for the county side, not the fire district side. And that represents a $50 million increase over a five-year period. So you say, well, what's Consumer Price Index tell you? Well, Consumer Price Index is quite a bit less. I'm not saying we should follow Consumer Price Index exactly.
Right.
But it is a, it is another way to look at the budget, whether our growth is defendable or not.
Right.
We've used assessed value growth, we've captured that to fix a lot of salary issues across the county organization. Almost, I don't know, Tom probably knows this off the top of his head, but most, I'd say 95% of the, of the increase in property tax revenues have gone to salaries in Central County to stabilize our workforce. Back before 2020, for us to address that would have been a mill levy increase. We've avoided that like the plague. So we didn't have the revenue to, to enhance salaries. But unemployment was much higher back in the day. And we were getting the job done. We were, we were much more conservative in that regard. But our employees suffered the consequences of not having raises year after year. So we've addressed that the last few years. And we're substantial, I think we have substantial employment. We filled most of our FTE positions because we've actually been really focused on getting the salaries up where they belong. Having said that, I don't know if we can continue this. Three years ago, we, we increased our property taxes 7.3%. This is the budget. 7.3% in 22 to 23, 7.6% from 23 to 24, 24 to 25 was another 6.9%. We've got to find a different way to do this. I think if this was, and I'm not, I don't sure you want to go out there and say this right now, but you're, at some point, you're going to tell me, you're going to tell us what the assessed value growth is after, probably sometime around January or so, your, maybe February. We'll hear a report from you that tells us what the assessed value growth is for the following fiscal year budget development. That's not today, correct?
Right.
So that day, that day is coming. And when that happens, people are going to get their tax, their appraisal notifications in the mail. And they're all going to get mad because there's an assumption that we are going to simply capture the increase. And to their argument, that generally happens by most municipalities. And even against ourselves, we captured 88% of that revenue, of those increases. I would, I would say the appraisal is not the budget. Our challenge is not the appraisal system itself. Our challenge is our budget. And I hope everyone understands that. There's been an awful lot of focus on the appraisal system. All the appraisal system does is divide the government burden by different property texts, by, by different property owners. You have a, a share of the total assessed value and you pay that share of the government burden. So we simply shift lines between property owners based on how much property value you have compared to everybody else. It doesn't, it doesn't actually change the number of dollars we're collecting overall. Only thing that changes that is the budget itself. And I know that sounds kind of wonkish. But the problem is not the appraisal system. I can't stress that enough. I'm afraid the legislature doesn't understand the point they just made. They're going to focus, they're going to focus on appraisal changes to fix the property tax collection problem. That's not the problem. The problem is the budget.
Right.
So again, if we want to defend this growth, we can do that. But I think we should be challenged to say, this is too much growth. We've got to slow this down. And I would argue that CPI or something closer to CPI is more defendable. But this is, this is the point now. We've got to stop, we've got to stop growing the budget at that rate. And so I know everyone is so focused on the, the appraisal processes being the problem. And I'll argue that's not the problem. I wanted to say that. Thank you. If you want to make any comments, you're welcome to do that, or anybody else. I wanted to present that. Actually, I have a lot more data here I could talk about, but I won't do that today. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Always intriguing. It'll be interesting to see how 2024 finishes up and where you're projecting assessed values at the end of the year. So, very good. Mark, Ronnie, thank you so much for the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
How?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on October 17, 2024.
The ever patient.
Yes, sir.
Joe Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that was held on October 17, we're seeking your approval for three items. Our first item is dependent audit for human resources. And that recommendation is to accept the proposal from BMI Audit Services LLC in the amount of $32,510 for a period of one year. Second item is rise with SAP S4 HANA Cloud Private Edition Premium and SAP Arriba SNAP Buying Implementation for Enterprise Resource Planning. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from ABIM Consulting LTD in the amount of $2,491,998. And our final item, item three, is radios for emergency communications. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions based on the Sourcewell Contract 042021-MOT. And that's in the amount of $582,276. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner, is any questions on the three items on, on the bid board today? Okay. I'll move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bidden Contracts on October 17, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Tom Stolz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office. Today on consent, we have items K through AE. There are two items on the agenda that are zoning cases which receive no controversy. However, there was some discussion at MAPC. So I would like to ask for approval of consent items K through AE with the exception of V and AE. And I want Scott to just come and give an overview of those. And especially if there's any public comment on that, I think that would be afforded here. I'm not seeing anybody in the audience, but in case there is.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Commissioners, we've had a lot of discussion on the consent agenda in these two items. Any questions? I'll move, I'll move to make the motion in a second, but any questions on the consent agenda outside of those two items? Caseigning, I'll move to approve consent agenda items K through AD. And we're excluding items V and AE.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Tom, go ahead.
Scott, if you want to come up and just give the 30,000-foot view of these two items, and at least the chairman can ask if there's any public comment. two items, and at least the chairman can ask if there's any public comment.
Okay, yes, sir. So on the item, which is zoning case 2024-39, let me see which item, that would be item V on the agenda. That one is a rezoning request to go from SF-20, single-family zoning, to LI Limited Industrial. My understanding is that the applicant is requesting the zoning change in order to allow for the development of storage condos at that site. Part of the ultimate development is in the city of Wichita. The applicant has requested annexation of the properties that are in the county. So part of the questions that have come up on this one is questions of, there were two members of the public that spoke at the MAPC meeting, they both had questions about stormwater, and also there was a question about notification. One of the individuals was a neighbor that had shown up and indicated they had not received notice, which is an irregular thing that occurs, though, from time to time. The applicant is responsible for getting information from a title company, a list of all the owners within the notification area of a thousand feet. And in this instance, the individual who was there, the neighbor, their address should have been on that list and was not. The MAPC reviewed the information, voted to find that there was substantial conformance with the state's requirements for notification, which is a formal process that we go through. And ultimately, the planning commission voted to recommend approval unanimously, and that vote was eleven to zero.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this specific item? Could you, you might just indicate why these go on consent? What is the reason why we would put them on consent agenda? I know we're pulling them off for discussion, but there's reasons why they would be on a consent agenda.
Sure, yes, sir. So of course, things on the consent agenda are generally not controversial. And so if a case has a protest, if protest is received, or if there's a recommendation for denial from the MAPC, then it goes on non-consent. So in general, things would stay on consent unless there's a reason to put them on non-consent.
Okay, very good. I think it's a couple of questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis.
I don't have any questions on this. I move the board to take the recommended action.
I will second that motion. I want to pause one second. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address? I think that's most appropriate to just, is there anyone in the public that would like to address zoning case 00039? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hal, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Scott, next one?
Sure. So the next one is item, I believe, AE, this is zoning case 2024-41. And both of these cases are in the same vicinity, they were heard at the same MAPC meeting. In this one, the applicants indicated that they're requesting a zone change so that they can do future duplex development on the site. For this one, there were, again, individuals, two members spoke at the MAPC meeting regarding this one. Their concerns, again, were drainage. And I should indicate, just for the last one and for this one, that drainage is, as part of our process, is typically covered as part of the plating process. And as part of that, if the property is over a certain size, which these both are, then drainage plans are developed by the applicant, those are submitted to the governing, to the city and/or the county, depending on where it's located. And then those are reviewed by professional staff, who make a recommendation about whether or not it's approved or not during the plating process. So in both cases, stormwater was an issue, but again, that's been addressed through the plating process, which is a separate process which is going on at the same time. The MAPC voted to recommend approval on this one unanimously, eleven to zero as well. That's all I've got.
Okay, very good. Same thing, we want to make sure, even these were on consent, we wanted to bring them to light, make sure everybody had an opportunity in the public, if they'd like to speak to it, to give them that chance. So if anybody in the public would like to speak to zoning change 2024-00041, anyone in the public like to speak to that? Packed house, no one's here to speak on that, so. Commissioner Dennis, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly, I move that the board take the recommended action.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hal, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Scott, thank you for hanging around and letting us do that, we appreciate that. Okay, I want to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hal.
President.
Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
President, next item.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda for the Fire District. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of September 18th, 2024.
Okay. If, Justin Wagner, all Commissioners were present for items A and B, would you mind if I take these together?
You can do that, certainly.
Okay, so Clerk, we'll take these two items together. Any questions on the meeting minutes for the 18th of September and 2nd of October? Seeing none, I'll combine and make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of September 18th and October 2nd, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hal, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stolz.
One item, Commissioners and Chairman, consent item C, ask for approval.
Okay. Commissioners, we've been briefed, any questions on consent agenda item C? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent agenda item C.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hal, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Moving along, next item.
Executive session.
We have no executive session today. I'll officially adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, bringing us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, anything from committees you'd like to report to the public? Look at us go. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two things I'd like to talk about. The first is that all the Commissioners, and I know the manager, are receiving emails where that people think that we're cutting schick. And I don't know that those emails are helpful, and they concern me a little bit. We just passed the 2025 budget, we left six million dollars worth of requests from our staff that were vital for our county on the table. We didn't vote for any of those, six million dollars. On top of that, we made some cuts, minor cuts, to a number of organizations, one of which was the Extension Center. And I hate to do that, but the question, and we talked about this yesterday, would we raise property tax on our citizens to support this? And I don't believe we would. We're already putting almost a million dollars a year into the Extension Center. On top of that, we give them a free building, we give them utilities, we give them maintenance, we give them insurance. They don't have to pay anything. In addition, if they rent out the facility, they can keep that money. Also, they keep talking about schick in these. The fact is, Kdad funds a large portion of schick, only one position that they have overseeing is funded through the Extension Center. Also, there are a number of other providers throughout the county, including the Central County Department on Aging, that can help people with schick. So I don't know that all these emails are helpful, I answer them all, but I'm going to tell them the same thing I'm talking about today, that I'm not going to raise property tax in order to be able to fund this. And I'm not going to continue, I won't be here next year, but the fact is, we left so much money on the table that is vital to our county, that that is more important to me at this point in time. So I just wanted to address that, to make sure everybody understood my concern on receiving these emails that are not valuable, but do take time to respond to. The second thing I want to talk about real briefly, I want to thank all the other Commissioners. I was gone for about ten, twelve days recently. I had an opportunity to go with Bishop Kimmy from the Catholic, he's the bishop for the Catholic Diocese of Wichita, and my wife and I went to Poland. It was a pilgrimage, and it was one of the trips of a lifetime. I've been around the world a number of times, I'd never been to Poland. And then to go on a pilgrimage with four priests, we had an opportunity, first of all, to go up to Chicago, and we went to one of the seminaries there that is training future priests. And then we flew over to Warsaw first, and we had an opportunity to tour a number of churches and actually the old part of town. Warsaw was bombed by the Germans in World War II, so the old part of Warsaw was destroyed, but it's been recreated. So you can go see what it looks like, but it's a recreation. After a couple of days in Warsaw, we got to travel over to a couple of locations where we had saints that were baptized and buried. In addition, we were able to go to the hometown of Saint Pope Jean Paul II. And we got to go into his home and see the bed that he was born in, and there's a beautiful museum there. And there were, I was surprised at some of the items that were in that museum. First of all, as you remember, Pope Jean Paul was shot four times. And the gun that he was shot with was in that museum. In addition, what really touched me a lot was that he was reading the Bible on his deathbed and died, reading the Bible. And the Bible that he was reading is in that museum, open to the page that he was reading when he passed away. From there, we went over to Krakow, and it was not bombed by the Germans during World War II, so all of the old buildings and everything is still there, so we're looking at hundreds of years old buildings. One of the things that struck me over and over again as I traveled throughout Poland is that you think that because that was in the communist block for so many years, it would be so far behind. I know our Greater Wichita Partnership is proud because we've got two cranes operating downtown, they probably got two cranes operating on every block in parts of the city there. It is booming. Every major company that you can name has a huge building with their name across the top, Deloitte, Samsung, you name it, they're all there. So while we were in Krakow, we went outside the city several times, they have a salt mine, which is different than the salt mine in, over in Reno County. In fact, it's a huge salt mine. And the miners carved out large rooms, we only covered one percent of that, and we walked two miles. And it's different in the fact that it uses cribbing to hold the ceiling and the walls in, where that over in Reno County, where they just keep big pillars of salt that hold it up. But one of the huge areas that they carved out, they turned into a cathedral downstairs, down a couple hundred feet underground. So everything down there is carved out of salt, the altar is carved out of salt, all the statues are carved out of salt. So that was kind of an amazing experience. And we did have mass every single day, and we said the rosary every day. So we said the mass in a different location every single day. Anyone that's a Catholic has heard about the Black Madonna, and you don't get close to the Black Madonna, but we had mass right in front of the Black Madonna. My wife was lector that day. So part of the sad part, we did tour Auschwitz. And we got to see both sides of Auschwitz and go through the gas chamber. I took a ton of pictures while I was over there. One of the places I did not take a picture, when I walked into where the gas chamber was and the crematorium right next to it, I could not take a picture in those locations because I thought that was dishonoring, the thousands and thousands of Polish Jews that were killed. And the statistics are staggering, as they kept bringing them into those facilities, seventy percent of the people that got off train car were exterminated immediately and then burned. So the whole trip touched me, but what I wanted to do was just kind of pass on what a great experience that was, I would recommend it to anyone if they have an opportunity. But I also want to thank the Commission because I was gone for a couple meetings, and you all carried on and did a great job. And I appreciate having the opportunity to go, it was kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Thank you all.
Sounds that way. Thank you for sharing, Commissioner Dennis. And we didn't, we didn't burn the county down when you were absent, so we were able, we figured this thing out. We were close, though. Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to take a point of personal privilege, I appreciate the information from Commissioner Dennis, glad he had a very wonderful trip and glad they're back safely. I have other news I want to share. Point of personal privilege, this is my seventh granddaughter, and she was born just four days ago. I wanted to just introduce the world to the most beautiful daughter, granddaughter in the world, and her name is Eva Marie, and she was born safely here in Wichita four days ago, so I'm proud grandfather, and she's my fifth granddaughter, my seventh grandchild, so I'm just celebrating God's blessing on our family, thank you.
Congratulations. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, not to be outdone, thank you, I appreciate you. Just before I left on the trip, we had our second great-grandchild, a daughter, so we have a great-grandson and a great-granddaughter. Congratulations on your, thank you.
We're done having kids at my house, I promise you. Yeah, we're done, we'll gavel out of that, we're done. It's been a good meeting, lots of things got accomplished today in Central County. Anything else need to come before the Commission? With that being said, there is no executive session, so with that being said, I'll adjourn the meeting. Have a good day, folks.